Please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today, amen. We acknowledge traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal interests and conflicts of interest where relevant, and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Are there any apologies? No apologies? Councillor Cumming, I understand, has a motion of condolence.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that this council extends its sincerest and deepest sympathies to the family and friends of the late Bob Hawke, and pays tribute to him for his dedicated service to the nation and the people of Australia.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Cumming, seconded by the Lord Mayor, that we adopt this condolence motion. Councillor Cumming, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I would like to thank the Lord Mayor for agreeing to this motion of condolence. Bob Hawke was 89 when he died. He was a great Labor Prime Minister, and tribute to his greatness was the fact that he won four elections from four efforts and never lost an election. A lot of people go out having lost elections, but Bob won every election he participated in. There were many fine achievements of the Hawke government, things like Medicare, capital gains tax, floating the dollar, a great economic achievement that he introduced with his tremendously talented ministry and caucus. When he came into office in 1983, only 30% of children continued to finish year 12. When he left office, 80% were completing high school. The Daintree River, the wonders of the Daintree River, were saved under the Hawke administration, and the Franklin River, the beautiful Franklin River and the rapids in that area of Tasmania were also saved. He was a Rhodes Scholar, and I can recall reading, I've read a few books on Bob, he made up his mind when he became a Rhodes Scholar that during the summer months, he would play cricket, he was quite a decent cricketer, and he would drink beer, I guess, that was he did in the summer months, and he would get stuck into the study in the winter months. So his study was of industrial relations systems, and it helped him land his job with the ACTU in Melbourne. He used to argue national wage cases in the old days, when your pay increase depended on the result of the national wage case, a different system to what we had now, and I think a lot of people perhaps would like to go back to that sort of system. He was a great negotiator of industrial disputes. He was known for, if there was a way of resolving an industrial dispute in a manner that was acceptable to both parties, he would be in there trying to negotiate it and did a great job in that regard. He gave up the grog when he became Prime Minister, which was, I think, something that was, he was serious about doing, he said he would do, and he did it, and that, I think, allowed him to be a more effective leader than he would have been otherwise. He was a leader of conviction and a builder of consensus, but consensus and cooperation never meant pursuing the lowest common denominator. Bringing the country together never meant presenting people with a soft option or taking the nation down the low road or the lazy path of least resistance. Bob and the brilliant cabinet he chaired so assuredly didn't demand consensus or capitulate to it, they built it, through leadership, through persuasion, through Bob's special connection with the Australian people that he nurtured and treasured. After he left politics, Bob's innate appreciation for Australia's aspirations made him a wonderful source of advice and inspiration for his successors. He was always generous with his time, and well into his ninth decade remained a star performer at every Labor gathering he attended and the Woodford Folk Festival, and at Labor gatherings no night was complete without his rendition of Solidarity Forever. Vale, Bob Hawke.
Further, Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I also rise to support this motion and would like to point out that generally we move condolence motions for former councillors, former Lord Mayors, but generally not for leaders at other levels of government, but we have certainly been happy to make an exception on this occasion because of the stature and importance of former Prime Ministers and particularly Bob Hawke. I personally, at the time he became Prime Minister, was six years of age, and then when he finished up as Prime Minister, I was about 13 or 14. So my own personal recollection of Bob Hawke wasn't that great. I certainly remember Paul Keating, he was very big in my recollection, but not so much Bob Hawke. But what I do remember of Bob Hawke and what I do know about Bob Hawke was all positive. I thought he was a very positive and real leader of our country. He was a character, he was a larrikin. I particularly liked the way that he brought on many policies that were modernising economic policies for the nation, policies that took some guts and determination to introduce, whether it's things like the floating of the dollar or economic reforms, they are never easy initiatives to introduce, and whether you're Liberal or Labor or anything else, credit to a leader of the country that brings in major reforms like that. So I want to acknowledge the contribution that Bob Hawke has made to our country, and I believe in many ways our country is a better place as a result of Bob Hawke and his leadership. And so, putting aside any kind of party allegiances, we need to respect the contribution that our senior leaders have made, and I certainly do respect Bob Hawke.
Further debate? Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I had the opportunity to spend a bit of time with Bob Hawke a couple of years ago in Bar Calden at the 125th anniversary of the Great Shears strike out there, and driving him around a bit and pushing him in his wheelchair, as he was confined to for longer periods of time of moving about, that rock star status that he had, not just among unionists and Labor people, but just among people out there in Bar Calden, locals as well, was very evident, and I think a lot of people have reflected on that a lot lately. As Paul Keating said famously, if you change the government, you change the country, and that couldn't have been more true about the election of the Hawke government in 1983. Australia was ready to emerge from the stagnant 1970s but needed leaders with reforming zeal, and Bob Hawke had that in spades. He can be described as both an Aussie larrikin and a Rhodes Scholar in the same sentence, and that's not something many Australians can notch up. There are no words that I can give in this condolence motion that will appropriately convey the great loss our nation has had. Bob's great love, Blanche Del Pujet, said it so eloquently herself in her statement, where she said, "The Bob Hawke and Paul Keating and their governments modernised the Australian economy, paving the way for an unprecedented period of recession-free economic growth and job creation." Bob's consensus-style approach of bringing together the trade union movement and the business community boosted the job opportunities while increasing the social wage through Medicare and extra financial support for low-income families. Together with the highly talented cabinets, he foresaw the Australian century and positioned Australia to take full advantage of it through a programme of sweeping economic reforms. Among his proudest achievements were very large increases in the proportion of children finishing high school, his role in ending apartheid in South Africa, and his successful international campaign to protect Antarctica from mining. He abhorred racism and bigotry. His father, Reverend Clem Hawke, told Bob that "if you believe in the fatherhood of God, then you must also believe in the brotherhood of man," Bob would add, "today the sisterhood of women." Bob was dearly loved by his family and so many friends and colleagues, we will miss him, the golden bowl is broken. One of the fundamental tenets of Bob's beliefs was that creed that he took from his father, the belief in the brotherhood of man and of course the sisterhood of women, and that fundamental belief, what we do in government or in our own lives should be informed by the way in which it impacts on people. The human side of decisions we make must be the overriding factor. This is something that's always stuck with me, and that other great saying, that we live in a community, not a corporation. Bob Hawke left an amazing legacy for generations of Australians to benefit from, whether it's universal healthcare focused on education and training, and the great increase in the number of children not only finishing high school but also going through to tertiary education and other study, and that real dedication to preserving the unique environment here we have in Australia, and a complete rejection, as Blanche said, of racism and bigotry in any form. Some of those famous examples are, of course, his campaign against apartheid in South Africa, but also the subversive campaigns against Asian Australians in the 1980s, but his dedication to humanity lasted well into Bob's later years, of course, with his keen support of marriage equality. Bob was a proud unionist, as am I. Bob was very proud of his great Australian Labor Party, as am I, and Australia is rightfully very proud of our Bob Hawke, as am I. In years to come, the question may be asked, where is the monument to the great Australian Bob Hawke? And we can confidently say, look all around you and you will see.
Further speakers? Councillor McGlocklin?
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak to this motion and to reflect on his great achievements as our Prime Minister. And I guess in saying these few brief words, I reveal my age to an extent. In 1983, I was a reporter for the ABC, it was Bob Hawke who got me to Canberra to cover the Hope Royal Commission, which none of you would remember, but it was into the Koom Evenov affair, and Bob Hawke, to his great credit, saw that there was something fundamentally wrong with a past party president who'd become a lobbyist getting closely involved with a Russian spy, sorry, an alleged Russian spy, and called the Royal Commission into it, and to his great credit, that exposure saw truth come to light, and that was all because Bob Hawke didn't want to see any skeletons in the closet, and good luck to him for that. As a reporter, he was fantastic, I stayed in Canberra through the 84 election campaign, I interviewed him on a few occasions, and always found him courteous and generous with his time, as he was with all reporters, I believe, and I thank him for that as well. He went on, of course, to win the 84 election, as has already been said, and the 87 election and the 1990 election. He was a great advocate for the Labor cause, and we all witnessed his great achievements over that period of time. Mr Chair, when Paul Keating finally toppled him as Prime Minister in December 1991, I was back in Canberra on the sidelines as a staffer, and remember well his final speech to the parliament, which was greeted with universal applause from all sides, and well-deserved universal applause from all sides. He was a great champion for his party, for his political movement, but for the people of Australia as well. I can't finish without concluding about his great authenticity as a leader, something to which we all aspire but rarely achieve. I only wish that I had the capacity to down a yard of ale like he was able to, I worked on that in my younger years but gave up, but it was, his achievements were many and have been reflected here very well in this place, and thank you for it.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise briefly to support this motion of condolence for former Prime Minister Bob Hawke. I was old enough to remember Bob Hawke, I was still a child, but through the 80s and 90s, a lot of my political values were formed certainly by listening to what was happening in the country and listening to my parents, both of whom weren't party political but were conservative country kids. And I really remember, I really remember, my parents had massive arguments before the election about whether or not to vote for Bob Hawke. They would never have envisaged it in any other, you know, situation, they just, you know, my dad would have been old-school national and, you know, mum would have voted Liberal, I'm sure, but I remember how important it was for them. Sorry, I'm a bit tired today, sorry about that. I just remember how important it was for them that the Franklin River in Tasmania was saved, and, you know, at the time that was such a defining issue in our country. And, you know, there was a lot of good work done to make sure that a huge natural resource in our country was protected, and people of all walks of life, people who'd voted Conservative their whole life, changed their minds and voted for the Labor Party and Bob Hawke. And they did so because, I believe, they, at that time, stood up and said, "We're going to do the right thing here," and the country believed them, they did it, they went on to do so many other things, and, you know, you sit back and, all the debates that have come since with Medicare and, you know, the Wages Accord, all the things that they did, floating the dollar, they can't have been easy things to do back then, you know, they were quite progressive things to do. So certainly I think Councillor Cassidy's hit the nail on the head when he talks about, you know, the way in which Bob Hawke and that whole cabinet, that whole ministry at the time, I think, had the interests of the country, you know, in their mind. Obviously, the other important things, I think, it's good to see a leader stand up and articulate values around authenticity and doing the right thing at a human level. And I think he did that with apartheid, I think that was an outstanding achievement. He certainly did that in China with Tiananmen Square, and, you know, when I worked in Canberra a long time ago, we had a staffer who, his family had been caught up in all of that, and he was always so grateful for what had happened and how he'd been able to stay in Australia, and, you know, that's why, you know, it was just such a positive decision to see leaders looking beyond their own self-interest to the national and international interest. I certainly also remember Bob Hawke being one of the most colourful politicians that I've ever seen, and I think it shows that the country can accept and embrace people who are flawed as their leader, it can recognise value and authenticity in people, and, yeah, I think it's a very sad day for his family. And I just, to all the Labor politicians, I know you're all sad, so, well done.
Further speakers? Councillor Richards?
Thank you, Chair. Bob Hawke, an Aussie bloke who enjoyed extraordinary popularity as a public figure. As it has been said over the past days since Bob's passing, Bob Hawke was a larrikin that is now legend. As was quoted in The Guardian this past week, "Bob Hawke was known to drink like a fish, swear like a trooper, work like a demon, perform like a playboy, talk like a truckie, and act like a politician." Bob Hawke was the typical Australian, but oversized, a relatable quality that connected him to voters and underwrote his extraordinary popularity as a public figure. It was the government Bob Hawke led that was one of Australia's most transformative. Aside from floating the dollar, as Councillor Johnson mentioned, but he also opened Australia to foreign banks and financial institutions, plus many other pursuits and reforms of government. It was his government's social policy legacy that is enduring no matter what side of politics we stand today. That is Medicare, compulsory superannuation, the Higher Education Contribution Scheme for university loans, and pursued reforms to pensions and welfare payments. At Bob Hawke's final press conference after losing Labor leadership, he was asked how he wanted to be remembered. His response? "I guess as a bloke who loved this country, and still does, and loves Australians, and who was not essentially changed by high office." Bob Hawke truly was a dinky-dye Australian. Rest in peace, Bob Hawke, may your legend live on.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I'd like to rise to contribute to the condolence motion for Bob Hawke. I suppose my first memory of politics in Australia, of course, is shortly after I arrived in Australia, we had, a year or so later, we had the dismissal, and so I was a bit surprised about how everything was working, and then Fraser came to the Prime Ministership, and I just got on with working in retail and trying to build a life for myself. But then, you know, the country was a little bit of turmoil towards the early 80s, and probably late 70s, early 80s, and this gentleman, Bob Hawke, started to become a bit more prominent in the media, but I think the thing that really captured me about him was the policy about the accord, trying to bring business and unions and the whole country together to move forward out of the turmoil that was very prevalent, luckily enough, not in the retail trade, I must say, but in a lot of the other industries around Australia. It sort of just made sense to me what he was explaining, and I even remember where I was when I first heard the word accord and his explanation of what, and then the commentators as well, and it just made sense to me as a businessperson that we should all be sort of working together for the betterment of the country and not sort of for selfish reasons for ourselves. He was more than just a politician, he was really a generational leader, a great leader, I believe, certainly since the Second World War, and he just, again, had the ability to bring the country and people together for a common purpose and a common goal, and hopefully a way forward with any particular issue. The first time, the only time actually I ever met former Prime Minister Bob Hawke was at a visit to the Anala electorate, I don't think it was called Anala back then, but had a different iteration, but anyways, I got a, I bought a ticket or whatever, and I was off to the Anala hotel, I was working up at Ipswich at the time, and as I say, the first time I actually met him was at this function, and it was sort of an interesting meeting because it didn't actually happen in the main dining area, but it happened in the gents. I'd gone in, he'd been running late and we were all waiting for him, and I just couldn't hold on any longer, so I went into the gents, and as I was washing up, and he walks, and I didn't know what to say, you know, ah, and I think I just said hello, and that was about it, and shook his hand, and that was it, because he was, you know, wanting to do his business anyways. So that was the only time I actually met the man, but I tell you what, he just captured the whole room, people, you could hear a pin drop when he was speaking, when he wasn't joking, then everyone was laughing, of course. The reason I joined the Labor Party some years later, right, it was probably the kernel that was sown by meeting him and by, and of course watching him through his Prime Ministership and how he dealt with issues, and of course the reforms that his government undertook. The floating of the dollar was a huge thing, and I just remember that when I first, when I, the exchange from America to Australian dollar, when I first came out, was not too good for me, converting into the Australian dollar, and then once, of course, the, once they floated the dollar, the reverse happened, so I sort of lost both ways. But anyways, but I just, in conclusion, I just want to say that Bob Hawke made this country a better place to live and work, and I really, I think I'm fortunate to have lived in this country under a Prime Minister of that calibre, and I will always remember him fondly, and, thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming, would you like to respond?
No.
All right, I'd like to put that condolence motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no? The ayes have it. Can I draw the council's attention to confirmation of minutes?
Mr Chair, I move the minutes of the 4,589th meeting, held on Tuesday the 14th of May 2019, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councillor Richards, seconded by Councillor Marks, the minutes of the 4,589th meeting held on the 14th of May 2019 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no? The ayes have it. Billy, could we please move to the public participant? Mr Francis Price. When you're ready, Billy will look out to your microphone there, and you've got five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We can run you ready.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor, councillors, thank you for allowing me to address you. My name's Francis Price. I'm here to tell you about my experience of what happens if you live in a body corporate environment and things go wrong. You should listen to me because there's people like me in all your wards. I found council made a mistake in their planning process, and I thought they'd fix it, but you didn't. My wife and I bought an apartment off the plan, and when we moved in, it was completed. We've got no regrets about our liftoff style decision, and it also makes it a bit harder for our children to move back home, which is a bit of a positive. We expected the people involved in our new home to do the right thing and act professionally, but unfortunately they didn't. Council made mistakes, and rather than understand why and fix it, they initially tried to ignore it and eventually issued a breach to the body corporate. Body corporate legislation gives unique abilities to developers to control body corporates for the first 12 months, and some use this power to limit their liability and get their money until they exit the property. If problems are not fixed in the first 12 months, the lot owners often incur the expense and trauma and have little experience and ability to fix these problems. The apartment we own is a combined residential and commercial property development, all of which is covered by a single body corporate. The development approval required two residential visitor car parks, only one had been provided, and the second one was allocated to a commercial property owner under the community management skirt statement. When I wrote to the developer and the body corporate, I was told that council had approved and indeed wanted this to occur. I wrote to council and was told by a council officer that I should forget it because that only held the body corporate responsible. The planned selling process showed that following an exchange with the developer's consultants, council signed off on a community management statement that allocated only one residential visitor car park. I wrote to the Lord Mayor, and was formed after I followed up eight months later, that while council does try to negotiate inconsistencies between the development permit and the CMS, legislation only requires that council note that there is a CMS. Does try is a level of performance that gets a kid in prep a gold star. If you think this is acceptable, then why are you even involved? The developer who had this development was also progressing a development application on the only lot they still owned in this development, and all the car parks had been allocated on the CMS. At the same time, the developer was telling me that the council had approved only one car park, their consultants were telling council and giving them documents that showed there were two. Council approved this additional development application over the property on the basis of this information. So where are we now? The council has issued the body corporate with a breach, tick to the honest person in council. After the breach advice, the developer's advice was, "The only thing that can't happen in my point of view is any spaces be taken away from Tenancy 1, which I've just sold." Tick to the developer. The body corporate has no capacity to resolve this issue, all problems rest with the owner, and council has shown no interest in investigating any systemic failures, tick to council for not getting your hands dirty. The increasing number of unit developments across the city mean there are more people like me with similar experiences. When assessed against any pub test, you fail miserably. The Planning Environment Court is generally perceived as the only remedy for property issues. The developing industry relies on this approach being sustained. Developers just view this as a cost of doing business, and I understand that council view it as a risk. Most people don't have the funds to pursue these expensive legal processes. I understand that you follow the rules that the state government make, and may not have the time or the resources to spend on complaints like mine, but experience from Royal Commission shows where this will lead. Eventually, people like me, who believe they are being ignored, will create a political need for an inquiry. The inquiry will find that government regulatory functions have failed to do their job effectively. You run one of the biggest regulatory functions in the state, you will be held accountable. What am I asking? I'm asking you to work constructively with our body corporate to resolve this issue, to genuinely investigate and hold people responsible and accountable for things that happen during this process, and to raise concerns with the state how about their clear gaps in the body corporate legislation, and how the legislation fails to ensure body corporates are established. legislation and how the legislation fails to ensure body corporates are established, governed and resourced in their first 12 months for the benefit of development owners. I'm here because I've lived with this for three years. I keep pursuing issues until I get a resolution. I'm not going away. You have the opportunity to change the way you approach development planning problems before those solutions are imposed on you. You have the opportunity to better serve the residents of Brisbane. You have the opportunity to do the right thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the good leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I understand councillor Burke will be responding.
Thanks, Chair. And Mr. Price, thank you for coming in this afternoon and addressing council. As you said, your development application for the unit that you live in was lodged back in 2012. It was an impact assessable development application and went through the process of assessment by the independent council planning officers. As part of that, there were a number of changes that were included as part of the application as well, which got to the point that you were talking to with regards to the parking arrangement. So there was 18 car parks for the commercial tenancies, 10 car parks for residents and the two visitor car parks. Council was made aware of issues regarding the, with, regarding the compliance of the conditions around parking and council has issued a show cause notice. The body corporate refused and did not address that show cause notice and following that, council has now issued an enforcement notice. So council is trying to work with the body corporate to address the concerns that you have raised. What you have highlighted here today, and I declare that I also live in a body corporate myself, is that there is gaps in the state legislation when it comes to how body corporates and community title schemes are managed. And I'm more than happy to catch up with you after this meeting, to have a chat to you about your particular experiences and what options might be there for council. But we are using the tools and the powers that we have through planning legislation and through our local laws to ensure that the developer, well, sorry, to ensure that the body corporate complies with the conditions that are in their development application, which has been approved on this site. And again, I thank you for coming in and addressing council.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order to you, councillor Strunk.
Mr. Chair, I rise to ask for the suspension of standing orders to allow me to move an urgency motion, motion calling on councillor Owen to pay back more than $10,000 in wages as councillor while she was running for the federal seat of Moreton in the 2019 federal election.
Do you have a second, eh? Do you have that, do you have that motion in writing? It's been moved by councillor Strunk, seconded by councillor Cook. That, and now councillor Strunk to urgency, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, it is the case that councillors in Queensland can nominate and run for a federal office, right? And we on this side don't have any, any issue with that. However, Mr. Chairman, we believe that, that any councillor running in a federal election should take leave of absence without pay once a, once the election is called. You can't serve two masters. Mr. Chairman, ratepayers should, shouldn't bear the cost of councillor Owen running for the federal office while being paid as a councillor. Now, if we look at how former councillor Simmons handled running for the federal seat of Ryan at the same election as councillor Owen, he resigned when the election was called.
Councillor Strunk, just, just to why we have to deal with it urgently, please.
Okay. The urgency of this motion, right, is to deal with how councillor Owen treated the ratepayers' money of Brisbane. Mr. Chairman, former councillor Simmons wasn't being paid by the ratepayers or using a council vehicle or an office paid by ratepayers. He actually had a separate campaign office. When former councillor Dick decided to run in the seat of Oxley, he was a private citizen with no trappings of office. Mr. Chairman, my urgency motion calls on councillor Owen only to reimburse the wages to the ratepayers as the right thing to do. Their current rules are silent when it comes to remuneration and taking leave. Mr. Chairman, public money should not be used to fund directly or indirectly a federal campaign by a sitting councillor. Allowing this to continue is indefensible and in my view, I am sure the majority of ratepayers would agree. This is urgent because they shouldn't, there should not be a burden of funding on the ratepayers in paying councillor Owen's wages during the campaign. Again, I say you can't serve two masters. Mr. Chairman, experience in local government is a great education for a higher office, but being paid a salary out of public funds during the campaign can be seen as having an advantage over privately funded campaigns. Mr. Chairman, I move the urgency motion that the council may have time to consider adopting the thrust of my motion and including it into the councillor's code of conduct for future elections. So, Mr. Chair, in fairness to the ratepayers of Brisbane, I do humbly ask that councillor Owen do the right thing by returning the wages that she was paid to the ratepayers of Brisbane during the campaign over the, over the, for the seat of Moreton. I so move.
All right. Those in favour of urgency, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please, attendants, please close the gates, collect the result.
Mr. Chairman, the noes have it. The voting being seven in favour, 18 against and one abstention.
Thank you. Councillors, please return to your chairs. Also councillor McLoughlin, I'm seeking advice at the moment about whether there's a way that you could vote from your chair while you're incapacitated, all right? So, so I'm just seeing how that works and there'll be advice later in the day. All right. Councillors, it is question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a chair of any standing committee? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, now that the federal election is over, can you please update the chamber on how a re-elected Morrison government will support the residents of Brisbane and what projects will be delivered from the campaign commitments?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Mackay for the question. And certainly the weekend's federal election was loomed large in all of our minds and all of our hearts as well, for different reasons from different sides of the fence. And I'm certainly not going to get into any kind of commentary on what happened and why, but what I want to focus on is what this means now going forward for the people of Brisbane. I guess from my point of view, what I am particularly happy about is that we have a government in place that is keen to work with us to deliver infrastructure. And we have seen that already on projects like the Green Camp Road upgrade, on projects like the Brisbane Metro, which is a fully funded project thanks to a joint contribution between council and the federal government. But I know there are many more such projects to come over the coming years and I absolutely look forward to making sure that council can do its part, together with federal support and funding, to deliver better outcomes for the people of Brisbane, better infrastructure. And so when I, when I'm asked what this election means for Brisbane, I say infrastructure, infrastructure and more infrastructure. And that is a good thing. So we will see a whole range of projects rolling out across the city and suburbs of Brisbane, projects that will deliver real improvements to people to help them get home quicker and safer, projects that will help deal with issues that wouldn't otherwise be possible for council to afford if it wasn't for support from other levels of government such as the federal government. To name a few, we see money for the first time that I'm aware of being put on the table for open level crossing replacements, which is fantastic from the federal government. So we know that traditionally those open level crossings have primarily been the responsibility of the state with some contributions from council, but we're now seeing the federal government come with real money to help invest in open level crossing replacements. And that is a real positive thing. I know, for example, out in the eastern suburbs, we saw a commitment from the government and Ross Vastaf for $400,000 to go to the state government for planning work on open level crossing replacements and then a commitment of 85 million towards the Lindem open level crossing replacement. So I'm keen to see that work progress by the state government, the planning work progress so that all three levels of government can partner up to deliver projects like this going forward. We know there's been a commitment of $25 million to progress the upgrade of the Moghl Road, Coonan Street, Kitting Street roundabout and I'm keen to make sure that progress, that plan is progressed as well. $6 million was committed to upgrade the intersection of Chelsea Road, Rickett Road out at Ransom in my old ward of Chandler, a serious safety concern, but one that council didn't have the funding available right now to fix. A fully funded project thanks to the federal government. $12 million for the upgrade of Newham Road and Wecker Roads in Mount Carvajal East. And I know the Morrison government has also committed $7.5 million for the following three progr, projects. The upgrade of Barber Road and Norris Road intersection at Brackenridge, upgrades to the Norris, to Norris Road between Telegraph Road and Brackenridge Road in Brackenridge, and upgrade to, upgrades to Hoyland Street between Clover Street and Brackenridge Road in Brackenridge. And this funding forms part of a $244 million investment in southeast Queensland from the Morrison government through the Urban Congestion Fund, which was announced in the last budget. There's also $1 million to upgrade the intersection of Commercial Road and Doggett Street at Newstead and an upgrade of $14 million for Rochedale and Priestdale Road at Rochedale. So I'm really looking forward to delivering these and many more projects in partnership with other levels of government, particularly the re-elected federal government. By partnering up, by working closely together, by cooperating, we can deliver great outcomes for the people of Brisbane. And in the end, putting aside whatever party you're from, that's what's important. Working together to make sure we get the right outcomes and I am confident that we can achieve that with the reelection of this government at the federal level. So it's an exciting time and we're going to see, as I said, infrastructure, infrastructure and more infrastructure. I'm keen to see the progression of the Brisbane...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, my question is directed to the Chair of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Hammond. Councillor Hammond, at the last council meeting, the Lord Mayor took a question on the cost of the zip line that had been directed to you. Given that councillor's code of conduct binds all councillors to transparent and accountable governance, do you agree with his decision to conceal a fact confidential negotiations were still underway with Zip Line Australia, which potentially added hundreds of thousands of dollars to the $300,000 which he had falsely claimed was the total cost?
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank the councillor for the question. I fully support the Lord Mayor taking that question from you last week because it was his decision and our decision on this side of the chamber to make a decision on the zip line. The Lord Mayor did not mislead the chamber in any way, shape or form. The Lord Mayor indicated, which was correct as of last Tuesday, Lord Mayor Adrian Trinner confirmed that council had spent 902, 902,000 towards the cost of the development application for the proposal. He admitted that at the time. What was later, we are in negotiations settling with zip line. Last Thursday, councillor Cummings, not last Tuesday, but last Thursday, Brisbane City Council reached a final settlement with the proponent of the now cancelled Mount Coother zip line. As part of the terms of the settlement, the figure remains confidential. However, council can confirm that the settlement figure, which includes the 300,000 already paid, is less than the million dollar commitment that council initially made for the project. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this administration is committed to a clean, green agenda and a sustainable future for generations to come. Are you aware of any threats to council's clean and green credentials?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Toomey for the question. And yes, we pride ourselves in making sure that council takes a leadership role when it comes to environmental issues, ensuring we have a clean, green city. It is something we are passionate about, but this past weekend has highlighted an issue that I think that this council can show leadership on and that is the use of single-use plastic wrap at polling booths. Now, we know that on election day, there were more than 200 polling booths across Brisbane. And when you start to think about the amount of plastic wrap used across those polling booths, we're talking about kilometres and kilometres of plastic wrap that was put up simply for one day and then most of which ends up in landfill after that one single use. And if you think about how many plastic bags could be made out of that, out of that kilometres and kilometres of plastic wrap, you get an idea on the scale of the issue here. It is, yes, it is one day, but it is one day of incredible waste of a single-use resource. And as far as I can tell, this is a, this is a resource that is not generally recycled. Now, in our investigations to see what local recyclers would take plastic wrap, we weren't able to come up with anyone in Brisbane or indeed southeast Queensland that was prepared to take or recycle plastic wrap. We did identify one down in Melbourne who may do that, but that would require shipping all of the plastic wrap down to Melbourne somehow to get it recycled. And so councillors would well remember that about 12 months ago, this council had a debate about a similar issue, which was the use of single-use plastic straws in council events and also helium balloons, both of which were examples of single-use plastics which often end up back into the environment or in landfill and causing a problem for our environment. And so as a city that wants to be a leader when it comes to a clean, green agenda, that wants to be a leader when it comes to ensuring we reduce our waste, then I believe that the use of plastic wrap at polling booths should not happen going forward, particularly for council elections. So this is something that I know that my team supports. This is something that we will be moving on. So I move suspension of so much of standing orders, Mr. Chairman, to allow me to move an urgency motion.
Do you have a second, eh?
Seconded.
Councillor Hammond, it moved. An urgency motion has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by councillor Hammond. Do you have that motion, Lord Mayor? Is it in writing, please?
I do. I will read out the motion now. The, this council calls on all candidates, political parties and third-party groups in future council elections within the Brisbane local government area to commit not to use plastic wrap at polling booths.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Lord Mayor, three minutes to urgency, please. Oh, excuse me, the urgency's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by councillor Hammond, to urgency, please, Lord Mayor.
Mr. Chair, obviously the, the federal election has just happened. I think it's all very fresh in our mind. I think while it is fresh in our mind, just how much waste occurred with that plastic wrap and we know that the problem is only getting bigger and bigger each election. I have witnessed election after election where there's more and more wrap and more and more plastic material produced. Some of that is recyclable, some of that can be used more than once, but certainly the plastic wrap on the fences during the day at polling booths, I think, is really an example of waste that we should really be showing leadership on. Now is the opportunity to do that while it is fresh not only in our minds, but in the public's mind. And let's all of us, regardless of political party or affiliation, commit that going forward at the March 2020 council elections, that we won't use plastic wrap on polling booths. at the March 2020 council elections, that we won't use plastic wrap on polling booths. Now, I don't think that there'll be any objection from most members of the community about that. I have a sneaking suspicion that it is not something that they particularly like to see. And I've already, I was already aware just over the weekend of various social media commentary on the wastage of plastic wrap and, and, you know, the, the unnecessary wastage that occurs and unnecessary cost to our environment. Now, when we come to our waste strategy that the city is working towards, it's all about reducing our use, recycling and reusing. Now, all parts of that strategy are important, but in this case, it is difficult to recycle that plastic wrap. It probably has to be sent to Melbourne or overseas to be recycled. You've got to call into question the viability of that. In this case, it's an opportunity to really reduce the production of that wrap. There are plenty of ways that you can get the message out to voters. There are plenty of ways that you can communicate to voters. And, you know, in standing on the polling booths on the weekend, and I was there for many hours watching people coming and going, most people did not even look at the wrap. In my experience, they did not even look. In many cases, people were standing in front of it, all of the party workers were standing in front of the wrap, so it couldn't be seen. In other cases, it was obscured. In yet other cases, it was on parts of the fence that people weren't even going past. So I do think this is a case of clear wastage. As I said, it's important that we have the ability in a democratic society that we have to get the message out, to be able to communicate with our voters. That is really a fundamental principle of our democracy. But I think in this case, the use of plastic wrap and the ever-increasing use of kilometres and kilometres of single-use plastic wrap has gone over the top, and I think we can show some leadership by putting an end to that at the next council election.
All right. On the matter of urgency, all those in favour say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, to the substantive motion, please.
I think I've pretty much covered what I need to say, so I'll leave it at that.
Further speakers? councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. And I'd like to congratulate the mayor and the LNP administration for bringing forward this motion. I think it's high time we had this conversation, and I think it is a really positive step forward for the city. If anyone's interested, we do actually, in the Greens, recycle that wrap, and it's really laborious because we have to wind it up after each election and unwind it manually again to put it up at the booths next time around. But it's always made me feel really uncomfortable that we do that, and I think this is a really positive step forward. I would suggest that there are also other forms of election material that are similarly unsustainable, and that maybe all parties in this chamber can start to think seriously about other ways that we can reduce the campaign materials and particularly those soft plastics that have a significant environmental impact, whether they actually get reused or not. In essence, essentially what we have in Brisbane at the moment is an arms race where as soon as one political party starts using a particular tactic in terms of signage or plastic wraps, the other parties feel that they have to do the same in order to be taken as seriously or to have the same marketing impact. And so I think in this sense, today signals a bit of a truce in that election campaign arms race, and I for one welcome it. I'm, I'm really happy to be able to work constructively across party lines in order to get this happening. But I would just say to the mayor that through you, Mr Chair, maybe we should actually consider formalising this as a council rule in some way. I know that the council already regulates election signage on private properties in the weeks leading up to a, to an election campaign, and I'd be interested to know whether we, we actually have the power to enforce this as some kind of rule, limiting the use of election signage. We already limit the size of yard signs, and we have very, we used at least, we have very specific rules about how often signs, how long signs can be put up. And I'd like to have a conversation about making this a formal rule that all parties and all independent candidates abound by, rather than just a, a general loose agreement. I'd also like to hear from the mayor whether he's, he's willing to commit that the LNP at all levels of government will agree to this across Brisbane. Is this just a proposal for the coming council election? Or is, is the mayor going to be pressuring his state and federal colleagues to also adopt a similar practice at future elections? I for one am very happy to work constructively to achieve this at all elections, not just at the council booths. But as I said, I think we also need to look more closely at the other forms of election material that are similarly unsustainable. Finally, I might just add that I was at, I've welcomed the previous ban on single-use plastics, but I've been to a couple of council events lately, or events that receive a lot of funding from council, that are still using single-use plastic water bottles and are still using plastic straws. And I want to draw the administration's attention to the fact that although that motion was passed quite a while ago, those changes still haven't been enacted, and a lot of events that are receiving council funding and support in one way or another are still using those single-use plastic items. Thanks.
Further speakers? councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on this urgency motion. 30 kilometres. If you assume there are 200 polling booths in Brisbane, and each major party puts up about 50 metres-
Councillors, we've held in silence.
That's about 150 metres per polling booth, approximately 30 kilometres of plastic wrap throughout the city. That's a conservative estimate, the moderate estimate might be different. I say that plastic wrap as single-use presents a huge problem for us in this city. Except for the Greens, this is not reusable. I do note that the Greens reuse it, they do not recycle it. But that's not possible for the LNP or Labor, especially from the last election, neither of these parties will be using bill short and wrap. We can't change the message on plastic wrap. And then what happens? They become drop sheets in the boot of the car, they become a drop sheet for painting. One preschool teacher did approach a booth and said, can I have some booth wrap for my kids to use as a drop sheet? One preschool teacher. The rest of it, to the best of my knowledge, went into landfill. And that leads me to the burden of this plastic wrap. This is a burden on the schools, the scout halls, and the community halls where the elections take place, because inevitably, this wrap ends up in their garbage. And this stuff's like Jack in the Box. Once you unroll it, it is really hard to put back into its original form. So what I say is that, is it fair for the schools, the scout halls, and the churches to wear the burden of this waste? And as the Lord Mayor said, there is no place in Brisbane that can recycle this plastic wrap. So it goes to Melbourne. Okay, send it to Melbourne. But does the cost of shipping or freighting this plastic wrap all the way to Melbourne not exceed the benefit? And we don't mean just economic cost, we mean diesel particulates all over the highways, the wear and tear, the efficiencies, the productivity. It's just not worth the effort of shipping truckloads of plastic wrap to Melbourne. So I support this motion.
Further speakers? councillor Cumming.
Yes, Mr Chair, this, we're, we're prepared to support this, this resolution. It is a very wasteful product, and I know the campaign I was involved with, we were instructed to take it to a certain place and put it in the skip there. So I would also have to say there's some side products that are generated when this stuff's put up on fences, on school fences, where zip ties are used and tape. And sadly, people aren't that diligent about taking it down at times, and so it's left to the school, the school janitors and groundsmen to take it down, and I think they get a bit annoyed about it, and I can understand why. And also, they're the type of items that if they're cut off and thrown on the ground, they could easily wash down stormwater drains and end up in the bay, so that's something we don't want either. I suspect there's other things that could be recycled on election day and aren't. For example, I don't know that everyone's as diligent as I was and take the leftover head of aid cards home and put them on my, my yellow bin. And the other thing, of course, that I suspect is, goes to the dump a lot, and I'm not sure whether it is recyclable or it could be, I've heard groups that do use it as corfluts. And I think that you'll find there's a lot of corfluts that have ended up in the, in the general waste stream at landfills around Brisbane as well. But certainly as far as this resolution goes, we're happy to support it, and, and, and we were voting for it today. Thank you.
Further debate? councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak to the motion before us today, and I'll have a few words to say about the motion, and then I'll move a, move an amendment which hopefully will be supported. First thing I'd like to say is, it seems I'm the only person in the chamber or the only councillor who does not use wrap, and I've not used wrap since I've been an independent. It's nasty, horrific stuff. I think everybody in the room knows their branch members hate putting it up. I can tell you now, after starting, when I was 17, doing this and setting up booths, there's nothing branch members hate worse than having to put wrap up around schools. So branch members will be very happy with this. And I just don't think it's necessary. It is, often carries divisive messages, negative messages. It's attached and damages gates. So, you know, it's, it's just not necessary. But I'm troubled, I'm troubled today by the Lord Mayor's motion. And it seems that this is somewhat of a, a political stunt, because number one, it's after the federal election. So if we wanted to do something for the environment, he could have saved, as councillor Mackay's just pointed out to us, 30 kilometres of wrap approximately going into the bin, but no, he's doing it after. And he's also saying that he'll only do it for the council election. So that's what my amendment will relate to. But just let me say this. This is the administration that has allowed carte blanche when it comes to election signage. They forced changes through here a few years ago, removing the limit of how many corfluts that you could put up around the city. It used to be 50 for council seats, and it's this LNP administration that now allows as many corfluts as you want, so as much plastic as you want, done by this LNP administration just a few years ago. It's this LNP administration that also has allowed giant-sized corfluts to be put up. Previously, they had a restricted size, 600 by 900 mils, and it's this LNP administration that has allowed giant corfluts to be put up. So it's really interesting, isn't it, that for some sort of short-term political publicity stunt, that the Lord Mayor is doing this? So I want to help make this a real thing in our city, not just a stunt. And if this Lord Mayor is genuine about wanting to reduce the level of waste, this motion must apply to council, to the state government, and to the federal government. So no wrap is used at future elections within the city of Brisbane. And I, I believe that that would have a better outcome for our city on environmental purpose. And certainly, as I said earlier, all the volunteers will be happy if they don't have to put it up at the next lot of elections. It's just not reasonable to say, we'll just do this for ourselves. We're here to make rules for the city of Brisbane, not just, not just for ourselves. The interests of the city of Brisbane are served by having a ban on this kind of one-use plastic wrap, applying to all elections. That is what is best for our city, that is what is best for the environment, and it's not okay for council to apply a rule to itself. And we don't know, I presume that the, the bylaw's going to have to be changed here to ban this. So it's very easy to include the state and council in this. I don't even know if we can get that done before the council election. So from someone who does not use wrap, who hasn't needed to use wrap, doesn't think wrap should be used, yeah, I really don't think this is something that we should be quibbling about just at a city level. It must apply to all levels of government, and that is where we will get the best environmental return for, for our money. I wonder then, with this kind of political opportunism in this motion, how the parties will get round this, what else they will do instead? Is the wrap made out of paper, or is it, I don't know what it is, or what else is going to happen? But because this LNP administration relaxed the rules a few years ago, you can have as many signs as you want now anyway, so it doesn't really matter if there's wrap or not. So let's make this real. Let's make this real. And I move the following, I move the following amendment to the motion, that we delete the word council in line one of the motion.
Seconded. All right. So it's been, an amendment's been moved by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Shree, that the amendment be that. The motion is changed so the word council is deleted. In line one? Okay, I understand. The final word of, yes, so that's deleted. All right. To the amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Can I just say, by removing one word from this motion, it will mean it will apply to all levels of government. The motion, the amendment will read, calls on all candidates, political parties, and third-party groups in future elections within the Brisbane local government area to commit to not using plastic wrap at polling booths. It's a simple amendment. By removing one word, we can make a real difference to our environment in Brisbane, not just at a local council election, the smallest probably of the elections. You know, it's the state, the feds that spend the big money on elections, millions and millions of, or hundreds of millions of dollars. So what is critically important is, if we are setting a new rule, it should not be allowed to advantage the big parties at state and federal level, it should apply equally across the city. Now, this would be the best outcome to ensure a good environmental, a good environmental outcome for our city. So if the Lord Mayor is genuine about wanting to do this, he won't just treat it like a political stunt a couple of days after the federal election. He will make real and lasting change that reduces the 30 kilometres of wrap, as we've heard from councillor Mackay, 30 kilometres of wrap. But that'll be another 60 kilometres of wrap that will still be going into rubbish bins, into the ocean, into the creeks, if this rule only applies to us. So I think it is critical, Lord Mayor, that you do the right thing here. We make rules that apply to the state and federal area with respect to our signage, we should do so with the wrap. And let's make a real change and ensure this applies at all elections, not just our own.
Further speakers? councillor Berg.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair. We won't be supporting the amendment that councillor Johnson's put forward, and she's made, in moving this amendment, a number of broad, sweeping statements around changes to local law and provisions around wrap. So continuous signage or continuous bunting signage has been able to be used on election day for a number of years. It is not something that was brought in as part of the changes that were done to the advertisement, local law, when I was the Chair for lifestyles and community services in this place. Nor the statement that she made about the number of signs that can be placed on the polling booth was a change that was brought in by this administration, because a polling booth is not governed on the day. The actual fence of the school, inside the school grounds, or the community hall, or the, or the school hall, or whatever it is that's used, the facility that's used on election day, is not something that we can actually control. So the choice here, though, is about leadership. The Lord Mayor has stood up and gone, we as a council, and we on this side of the chamber, and councillor Toomey, have decided that, given the public sentiment around single-use plastics, given this council's statements around the use of single-use plastics over the last 12 months, given the move to reduce waste, to remove single-use plastics from what we do as a society, and what we saw on the weekend, now is the time that this council as a whole should commit to stop using plastic wrap on election day. And, and-
Next way.
And it's heartening to hear that the Labor Party is following the leadership of this administration again in agreeing to this motion we had before us today. It is obviously then something that we will have to go about implementing a change for, to the local law. But today, just like we did with plastic straws and plastic water bottles, we didn't, as a council, say, well, we want to ban state government buildings in the city from doing them, using them. We don't want to ban private businesses from using plastic straws or from using single-use water bottles. We want to show leadership. And this administration has a track record of setting the agenda and showing leadership on environmental issues over a number of years. We were the largest purchaser of green power in Australia for years, Mr Chair, not because, not because- power in Australia for years, Mr. Chair, not because, not because we needed to be, but because it was the right thing to do, and we wanted to show leadership and encourage other businesses and other organizations to invest in green power. And again, this is about leadership. So if the state levels of government and the federal levels of government want to fall in behind Brisbane City Council showing leadership on this issue, then that is fine. But this is about this council committing to reducing single-use plastic, following the significant gains that we've already made in this space. And I commend, sorry, and I encourage people not to support this motion, because it is not in keeping with previous actions of this council. And I would encourage councils, though, to support the substantive motion, because it will send a clear message to our respective parties and to the candidates at the next council election.
Further speakers, councillor Cummins.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we are prepared to accept the amendment. We think that there's no reason why it shouldn't apply also to the state and federal elections as well. And we're happy to support the amendment proposed by councillor Johnson.
Further speakers. Councillor Sri.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm also quite happy to support the amended motion. And I, I wonder if through you, Mr. Chair, maybe councillor Burke didn't quite understand what the amended motion does, because all it's suggesting is that we are calling on all the parties and third parties to not use plastic wrap at all, at elections of all levels of government. That's all the motion does. It doesn't actually require a formal ban or any, any kind of regulatory change. It's, it's simply almost exactly the same motion as the, the mayor moved, but simply applies to state and federal elections as well as council elections. And I think that's a really sensible way forward. It doesn't even necessarily bind the LNP to that position. Maybe this council calls on all parties to do this, and the Queens and LNP will decide to ignore that call. I know the, that this council has called on all levels of government to do all sorts of things in the past, and that doesn't necessarily mean they do it. But I think it's fair enough for us to call on all, all political parties and third-party groups and candidates to, to not use plastic bunting at, at future elections for any level of government. And I, I just really want to urge the, the LNP to consider accepting that amendment, because it, it's just a common sense, minor improvement to what's already on, on the table. And I'm, I'm really heartened to see that the Labor councillors are open to supporting that motion as well. I think that's a really positive step forward. And I'm sure councillor Cummins and the other Labor councillors will be engaging in discussions within their party to ensure that that's considered for the 2020 state election. I'm very happy to commit that I'll, I'll raise those conversations within my own party and really push the issue, because I think we should be looking to phase these out for the state and federal elections as well. So maybe, through you, Mr. Chair, the Lord Mayor, maybe rather than just going for the, the low hanging fruit of the council election, we should also call on all parties to stop using this plastic bunting at state and federal election polling booths within the Brisbane area. I don't think that's stretching things too far. I think it's, as, as councillor Mackay said, the, the bunting has an, has an enormous negative environmental impact. That doesn't matter whether it's a local council election or a state election. It still has a negative environmental impact. It's still a problem. So why not just go that little bit further and actually call on all, on parties to stop using this for all levels of government election? Thanks.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnson, I invite you, you'll write a reply.
Yes. Let me be clear about the fake news that the councillor Burke raised. This LNP administration abolished the fifty sign limit in the lead-up to elections, and has allowed carte blanche across the city.
Point of order against you, councillor Johnson, councillor Burke. The claim is noted.
Polling places obviously are treated differently. You can put up as many signs as you want on polling places. But let me be clear. It is this LNP administration that removed the limit on signs. It is this LNP administration that removed the size limit on signs. So the visual pollution that we see at election time now, compared to a few years ago, is a direct result of this LNP administration allowing carte blanche when it comes to electoral signage in this city. I, I'm seriously disappointed that they're not going to do this. It, it just undermines the argument that, that the Lord Mayor has put forward. Absolutely, this is a, there's no other way to describe this other than it's a political stunt. I mean, councillor Burke got up and made the argument for removing council. He said it's about leadership. It's about doing the right thing. Well, no, apparently it's not, councillor Burke, because you're not going to support the right thing here. True leadership is standing up and saying, if it's good for us, it's good for our city, then we should be talking to our parties about delivering a better outcome by not using this plastic wrap. You know, if it's clogging up our waste systems, as the, the Lord Mayor said, it is really important that the people who use the most of it, and that's the feds and the state guys, are included in this ban. Otherwise, this is a political stunt, and it is just empty rhetoric from this Lord Mayor, rather than real action on reducing harmful waste in our city. Now, I urge him, I know he, he walked over to councillor Burke and instructed councillor Burke, I presume, on what to do here. So I urge him to rethink that in the next two minutes while I'm speaking. Because all that is being asked here, as councillor Sri pointed out, is that we are having a conversation and taking a leadership role as a council to do this. Now, I commend the Lord Mayor for bringing it forward, but it's only going to have, and here's the word of the day, isn't it? Authenticity. It's only going to have authenticity if it applies to all levels of government. Otherwise, what we're saying is that plastic wrap used by councillors is bad for the environment, but plastic wrap used by state members and federal members of parliament is good for the environment. Now, that is, that is a ridiculous proposition. So I urge the Lord Mayor to rethink this. It is the right thing to do here, to make sure it applies equally at all levels of government. I can guarantee your volunteers will thank you down the track. It'll be good for the city. It'll unclog everyone's wheelie bins or wherever stuff's getting dumped. And it'll be good for reducing the amount of plastics going to landfill and stuck on the fences of churches and schools afterwards. And I would just say that, to take councillor Burke's line, this is absolutely about leadership. And it is critically important, Lord Mayor, that you look at accepting what is a genuine suggestion to improve your motion, so that it has real and lasting impact for our city, not just a short-term political one.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Sri.
Will councillor Johnson take a question?
Councillor Johnson, will you take a question?
Sure.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor Johnson. How do you think we could, this, this rule or agreement should also apply to other forms of plastic signage like core flutes? Should we be going further down the track and talking about the, the number of plastic core flutes? Are they, do they count as a single-use item? Or are they in some way not a single-use item?
Look, I'd be happy to have a broad discussion about what to do. I mean, I don't treat my core flutes as single-use items. And I don't know there'd be many politicians in Australia that would, given their cost. But I'd be very happy to. I mean, you know, different jurisdictions around the world have a lot of different rules about election signage and election days. And, you know, there are similarities in some countries and not in others. You know, from time to time, there has been discussion about electoral form at the federal level, about reducing the amount of people handing out how to vote cards, whether it's done electronically. And it never seems to change, because in my view, the big political parties like it this way. And I will include the Greens in this. They have volunteers and resources and everybody who can, you know, go out there and help. So I'd be happy to have a broader conversation around what we do. I run a very low-key campaign. I do put core flutes up. If they were banned across the city, then I'd just have to deal with that as an environment. But we could start, I think, in the first instance, by making sure that we have real change here, authentic change, that delivers the best outcome for the city, not just today's political debate.
Councillor Burke, your misrepresentation.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The claims of fake news by councillor Johnson are false. I was very concise in my comments, which were relating to the number of signs that are available on churches, school halls, school fences, and inside school grounds not being governed by the local law that council has.
Division.
All right. Ring the bells. This division was called by councillor Johnson, councillor Sri. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chairman, the noes have it. The voting being seven in favour and eighteen against.
The noes have it. The amendment fails. Please return to your chairs. All right. Are there further speakers to the substantive motion? Councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Well, Chair, I enter this debate as the Chair of Field Services, which of course is the, the portfolio that looks after landfill. And so I am very much in support of the motion. Can I say that, having just existed as we all have through the federal election, one of the things that was most mentioned was climate change. And it appeared that many of the parties vied for who was going to be able to provide the best answer to climate change. Can I say to this chamber that each and every one of us has the responsibility in this area? It's not going to be a simple solution to save our planet. And it behoves all of us to work in whatever way we can towards that goal. So can I say that some of the debate earlier has talked about leadership? True leadership is putting forward an achievable vision. It's what Scott Morrison did on the weekend. It's what the Lord Mayor has done this evening. And it's what I'm standing to support. Now, very many of us would have remembered that just last week, in this chamber, we had three amazing young women, three students from a school, who gave us all a great lesson. They were called the P-hubed, and they were the Plastic Pollution Preventers. Now, I think the debate that we've had earlier in the chamber is, is certainly something that resonates with what they said to us last week. They said that they were passionate about saving our planet, and specifically, they were committed to helping save our environment from plastic pollution. And they, they talked about inspiring others to do the same. Now, that is exactly what this motion is about. It's about leading by example. It's about making the difference that we can at a council election. And it's about inspiring others into the future. I am absolutely amazed by the work that my waste minimization team does in this space. They are out there each and every day, making sure that we are educating our residents of Brisbane on what we can do to make a difference. We're, we're just about in July to have plastic-free July, and there'll be some activities that we will be doing there. Can I just say through you, Chair, that it is absolutely important that we all think about the ways that we can make a difference to this planet? Because at the end of the day, it is that that is really going to be the, the reason that we all see our grandchildren, as I very much want to, enjoy the beautiful city that we, that we all live in. So I would just like to finish by saying that I'm very much supporting this motion. And I thank the Lord Mayor for his vision in putting forward a very achievable motion.
Further speakers. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise in support of this motion as the Parks and Environment and Sustainability Chair. I'd first of all like to congratulate the Lord Mayor. He's a new Lord Mayor, and he has come out with changes to improve our city. He has cancelled the zip line and listened to our residents. He is committed to more parks across our city. He, under his leadership, has purchased, set the seven hundredth hectare of bushland preservation. Lord Mayor, this Lord Mayor is committed also just as much to our environment. I'd like to make a few points and refer to councillor Sri's comment about our, our fairs and whatever with single-use plastic bottles. Councillor Sri, we are trying to phase this out, like with our Greenheart fairs. And you're most welcome to come over next weekend to the one at Marchant Park, or Seventh Brigade Park at Chirmside, and enjoy it. We have reusable some bottles, plastic bottles, at the May Fair with water stations, which is a great initiative that our Greenheart team are doing for our environment. However, this is a little bit more difficult in our localized fairs. But we are working with our community groups to reduce and help them find different alternatives than those single-use water bottles. Councillor Sri, I can guarantee you, just in my household, they are never single-use water bottles. We refill and refill and refill those bottles when they come into our property. I'd also like to make a comment on, this is not some political stunt. This is a new Lord Mayor who is making a decision, because just recently, we had an election. And he saw the amount of wrap. He recognized the amount of waste. But what we've got to understand here, we would love the state and federal guys to follow our lead on this. We would absolutely love them to follow our lead. But the problem is, we can't, we cannot ban plastics. Only the state government has the ability to do this. Because as we rightfully said, where the plastic wrap is, we don't own that land. This is state government schools. This is private churches. This is halls. So we call on the state government, work with us, follow our lead. I'm absolutely delighted that those opposite, those opposite actually support us. And let's hope they fulfill this commitment in the next council election. Don't forget about this debate today, and actually stand by what they say for once. Let us all work together, not use the plastic wraps on election days, and let's, let's have a discussion with the state government. See if they can take this ban and make it formalized. So we can't use those plastic wraps in our schools, halls, or other community areas. Mr. Chair, I fully support this motion, and I applaud the Lord Mayor for bringing it to the council today.
Further speakers. Councillor Griffiths.
Ah, yes. This is, this is very interesting urgency motion. It's interesting that the Lord Mayor was so passionate about this urgency motion that he didn't cross the floor and speak to the opposition about it. So, and he, he's concerned about it all weekend, that he couldn't actually ring the opposition leader to speak to him about it. But he's pleased that we're all supporting it. I, I suspect that this is, and disappointingly, I suspect that this is really more about politics and about achieving any real change today.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order against you, councillor Griffiths.
Will councillor Griffith take a question?
No, I won't. Councillor Griffiths, will you take a question? Sorry? Will you take a question?
No.
No. Lord Mayor, he won't. Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, this is, this is actually question time. What the point here is that people in this chamber shouldn't forget, is that it was the LMP who actually voted two times, they voted against a ban on single-use plastics in Brisbane. It was actually the LMP who voted and that was in May 2016. So this administration, this majority council, all these 19 councillors here have voted against single-use plastics, banning them. And it was in a humiliating debate that they actually had to turn around and say, oh no, no, well actually it was our idea. Went late into the night and then they did a media release claiming the idea themselves. So this council hasn't been a leader, this administration hasn't been a leader in terms of recycling and what it has done. And I suspect, as councillor Johnson said before, because they don't want to extend it to state and federal elections in Brisbane, that really, are they looking for a change here? Or are they just looking for a stunt? And unfortunately, I think this is a stunt, because they had just had the opportunity then of voting to extend it to their state and federal colleagues, but they didn't want to do that. And one can be cynical about that and say, I wonder why they didn't want to do that. Councillor Johnson also made a good point that they've removed the levels, moved the number of signs that can be impacted on in terms of, in terms of our own sign. So now, instead of having 15, it's actually, oh 50, it's a lot more than that. So I need to correct that, it wasn't in May 2016, it was in 2018 that we had that debate. So Mister Chair, look, we've tried to amend this motion to make it better for Brisbane, we've tried to get a better outcome for Brisbane in terms of saying, yes, this should be local, state and federal elections that the plastic bunting ban should apply to. Unfortunately here, it's been the Lord Mayor and his team that have voted against that. We will continue to support this motion in its, in its less impactful way, but at least it is, at least it's a step in the right direction. But once again, I think that this has been a big political stunt by the LMP. It's been a big stunt in terms of the Lord Mayor looking like he's doing something, but when we actually try and refine it and make it better, the Lord Mayor has backed, and his LMP team have backed right back off it and taken the partisan position. Thank you.
Further speakers? Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, write a reply please.
Thank you. Look, I'm disappointed councillor Griffiths didn't take my question, because he made a really interesting statement just before. He made the claim that apparently we only care about an issue if we check with the Labour Party first. So week after week, when they come in with their own urgency motions, the fact that they don't check with me first, obviously means they don't care about the issue. That's just silly logic that we've heard there. The reality is this, what, that's right, we do control the agenda, councillor Cassidy, we are controlling the agenda and we're showing leadership here. What we're doing is setting the example. And what we're not doing is what Labour, governments and administrations love to do, which is to ban stuff. We're not doing that, we're showing leadership. And there's a difference, because there's a quote I like about leadership, which says, the first person you lead is you. And it's about setting example, and that is the appropriate thing to do in this case. And it's like with the plastic straw position that this council took. We didn't go out and decide to ban plastic straws for small businesses out there, for community groups, for Kindies, for all of those places that might use plastic straws. We didn't agree or decide to ban it for them, what we did is we decided to show leadership and ban it for us. And that's exactly what's happening here. Now, Labour, Labour has an interesting position here, because they're saying they're all in favour of this, yet when you hear them talk, they're so negative and political. And they just can't help themselves, they, even when they support something, they don't. And the reality is this, we don't control and we don't seek to control what other levels of government are going to do at their next elections with plastic rap. But we will show leadership at our next election, and this team is 100% on board for not using plastic rap, and we won't use plastic rap at our next election. Now, there was a clear opportunity here for other people in the chamber to say, you know what, I'm not going to vote for this, I'll use plastic rap. And we would have been at a significant political disadvantage potentially, but we were prepared to go out on a limb and do this, because we believe it's the right thing. We could show up at the next election in March next year and have the place wrapped from left to right with Labour or Green rap, and there wouldn't be a thing we could do about it, because we committed that we wouldn't do it. So we were prepared to take that stand, that risk, because we believe it's the right thing. Now is the right time, we've seen the level of wastage that occurs, and we've seen that now is the opportunity to show leadership. I believe this is something that the community will support. The community knows that Brisbane City Council does take a leadership role when it comes to environmental issues, but they also know we're practical, we don't just go around banning things for ideological reasons. We, we implement practical things that make a difference, that people support, and this is one of those things. Now, if the state Labour Party, or the state LMP, or the federal Labour Party, or the federal LMP, or Greens wanted to make a similar decision, then I would commend them for that. And we will certainly, after this debate, be writing to the political parties to let them know about our debate and the outcome of this resolution of council. And, and we will be, and we will be making sure.
Councillors will be heard in silence.
That they are aware of our position and our leadership on this issue. But ultimately, that is a matter for them, and we won't be making decisions for other levels of government on this, but we will be showing leadership, that is the right thing to do. And I do believe this is something that the community will support us doing.
For those, for those who support the substantive motion, vote aye.
Aye!
The contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Section.
Division called by Lord Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Ayes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Councillor McLaughlin has indicated to me he's in support of the motion, and clerks, please read the results.
Mister Chairman, the ayes have it, the voting being 25 in favour.
The resolution is carried, councillors, please return to your chairs. All right, we're going to resume question time, there is roughly 34 minutes to go. The question is from the opposition. Councillor Shree.
Thanks Mister Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, a common choice in planning for new active and public transport infrastructure is whether we acquire private land so that we can widen a corridor and deliver new bus lanes, bike lanes, et cetera, or whether we convert existing road space that might otherwise be allocated towards cars, towards other uses such as bus lanes. Do you accept the general proposition that depending on the local context and the support of local stakeholders, it is often going to be cheaper and more efficient to convert parking lanes or existing car lanes into bus lanes and bike lanes, as opposed to simply spending a lot more money and widening the entire road corridor?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you Mister Chairman through you, thank you councillor Shree for the question. Look, there is no doubt that the repurposing of existing road space can be a cheap boost to either cycling or public transport, there is no doubt about that, and I think that's just common sense. But the cheapest solution is not always the right solution, the cheapest solution is not always the solution that the community supports as well. And we've seen countless examples of that, because in this place, we are not some kind of benevolent dictatorship that can just decide that this road is going to get repurposed, whether you like it or not. We are here to serve the people of Brisbane, we are here to listen to the people of Brisbane. And when it comes to decisions like this, people do want to have a say, communities do want to have a say. Now, I can, I was out there today at the Woolen Gable Bike Way, which is now 90% complete, and we saw the example right in front of us where existing road space has been repurposed for public, for active transport. And it is getting great use already, and I know that will continue to grow, but there was a clear process to go through to get to that point. There was consultation to be done, there were design plans to be released to the community, and there was also, no doubt, some controversy about changes to car parking and lane arrangements and road space. So these are discussions that have to be made. So it's easy to, you know, take a helicopter view and say, yes, it's cheap to take away existing road space and repurpose it, and that is correct. But in this democratic environment that we operate in, that is not always the solution that the community wants. We have a responsibility to listen to them, to make informed decisions, to take them through the process, to justify the projects that we're going to progress with. And this is something that is an ongoing process for the city. I remember very clearly when we first proposed the Winham Road corridor upgrade, there was a debate about whether those extra lanes should be bus lanes or transit lanes or just general purpose traffic lanes. And there was, there were at the time some opinions expressed in this chamber, and so the former Lord Mayor agreed to go out to a survey of residents in the eastern suburbs to see what they thought about that proposal. And so there were various options put forward, and the community came back in favour of general traffic lanes. Now. Point of order Mister Chair.
Point of order councillor Shree.
I'm concerned the Lord Mayor is misleading the chamber and that the community was never asked whether they wanted the road widened in the first place.
No, that's not what point of orders are for. Lord Mayor.
It has been my experience, Mister Chair, that whenever someone doesn't like the outcome of a survey, they always question the legitimacy of the survey, and, oh, there weren't enough people who were surveyed, or the questions were wrong or misleading. Look, it is, this is the ongoing issue that we deal with when we consult people, every time I've seen it. If people don't like the outcome of a survey, they always, their fallback position is to question that survey. And look, that is their right to do, but I have no doubt that the outcome of that survey was indeed reflective of the views of the community. And that's why the former Lord Mayor made the decision to proceed with the Winham Road corridor upgrade as general traffic lanes, because the outcome of that and the traffic modelling showed that there would be a benefit not only for general traffic, but also for public transport as well, improving the flow of buses through that precinct, and also for active travel as well with the creation of a separated bike way and a separate footpath as well. So there were, there were public and active transport benefits to that project, which was a road widening. Now, I know councillor Shree doesn't agree with it, but I believe that the community does overall support that project. And there are also other reasons to do these kind of projects as well. In this case, this was a really dangerous stretch of road, there was a very sharp bend on Litton Road, many accidents happening at the intersections along that corridor. So even if it was only for safety reasons, there were clear justifications for that upgrade. So we decided to maximise the investment, not only to get those safety benefits, but also to provide benefits for public transport users, and also for active travel as well, by providing new and upgraded infrastructure. So councillor Shree asks an interesting question, it is, it is a high-level question, and as I said, the higher you go, the easier it is to answer that question, but when you start drilling down to real-life examples, you start talking to the community and listening to residents, suddenly that easy answer becomes less clear. And in this community, I know that the more you talk to people, the more different views you will get.
Further questions, councillor Wyndham.
Thank you Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, my question is to the Chair of Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams, Deputy Mayor. The Lord Mayor's Business Awards nomination opened last week, giving Brisbane's entrepreneurs and small businesses the opportunity to have their success and hard work recognised citywide. Can you outline how these awards are building for a better Brisbane and how businesses can get involved?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mister Chair, and thank you councillor Wyndham. It is very exciting that we've opened the rounds again for the Lord Mayor's Business Awards for 2019. It is very clear that business confidence has boomed under this LMP administration, and we are working hard to make sure that we are supporting our local businesses, giving them a hand up, not a hand out, and making sure that that greater Brisbane economy of $135 billion does grow to as expected, $217 billion by 2031. There are so many factors which make up these numbers, we've seen hundreds of startups begin their work here and go nationwide, we've been helping in facilitating those microbusinesses growing to small, medium-sized businesses, particularly with the capital. This is a testament to our drive to make the Brisbane of tomorrow better than the Brisbane of today. So we've been doing this in a number of ways, and one of those is the Lord Mayor's Business Awards that we said have just opened. Last week, we held a Lord Mayor's Small Business and Social Enterprise Forum, which is absolutely outstanding, we have several events of these each year, and the attendance continues to skyrocket. Last week, there was standing room only for the social enterprises that came along to find out how council could support them. Of course, we continue with our business hotline access for 24/7. And what we heard last week from our leaders in social enterprise scene, that being able to access this advice during the late night and early mornings is extremely helpful for people that are out there, day in and day out, working hard at their businesses and really don't get time to sit down and think about the next step until the after hours. Last financial year, we saw over 1,000 calls made to the business hotline outside of business hours, everything from permits to business opportunities, procurement and commercial activities from the great staff at the hotline. And of course, the extension of this is the way that we can showcase their talents each year. For 14 years now, the Lord Mayor's Business Awards have allowed companies, whether they were small, medium or large, to have their work showcased to the industry and to the greater Brisbane as well. Stronger businesses means there are more jobs, and with more jobs, there is a stronger economy. I'm pleased to announce to the chamber that this year, in the 14 years history of the awards, we've got two new categories that have been announced, and that is the category for outstanding social enterprise and for outstanding micro enterprise. And I think that reflects where we have been putting our support over the last couple of years. We know that 88% of businesses in Brisbane employ less than five people, that's why microbusinesses are so important for our local economy. They keep the cash flow local, they ensure that Brisbane residents and visitors have access to both traditional and innovative services, and our social enterprise in particular has grown exponentially over the last couple of years. These awards will recognise businesses that make a significant social impact, regardless of their size when it comes to social enterprise, in tackling social problems and improving our communities and environment. It is also a testament, those who've worked hard in the industry and their prominence, that it's grown so much over the years that it's now featured as an award category. We're in our second year of supporting Tom Allen in providing training for those in social enterprise to make sure that they can take their great ideas and their wonderful passion for what they're trying to do with the community out into the business world and make it sustainable. So this takes a total of 11 awards this year when we add these two in, they are currently open for the night and they will close on the 19th of July. We encourage. on the 19th of July. We encourage all businesses and business people to consider nominating, and all councillors in the chamber, please, right across the wards, please speak to your local businesses, excuse me, and get them involved in these nine categories plus the two new ones that we have as well. The more successful and innovative businesses we have in Brisbane to call home, I think the more we will see that personal success and the ability to raise the profile of Brisbane, build our economy and enrich our social fabric. So please encourage everybody to nominate as well. Things to remember too is our past winners have gone on to achieve great levels of professional and personal success. I see last year's winner Caroline from Frankie Fours is actually now on the Commonwealth Bank ads across the nation. They've come on board to support her through her business. We've got to love a female that comes up with comfortable high heel shoes. What else could you possibly ask for as well? We also heard the other day from Yasmin from the World's Greatest Garage Sale. Again, an idea that started in a social enterprise here in Brisbane and has grown to where they have councils all across the country trying to be involved.
Further questions? Councillor Cumming.
Chair, my question is to the Finance Administration Committee Chair, councillor Allen.
Point of order. Point of order against you, councillor Cumming. Councillor Johnston.
Normally, my question follows councillor Shree's. So it must be my turn.
I don't think that's correct. Thanks, councillor Cumming.
We get five to your one, so I don't think, anyhow, that's all. Question is to the Finance Administration Committee Chair, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, your administration has announced it will devote the dividends from the CBIC to establishing parks. What has the LNP administration been spending the annual multi-million dollar dividend on up until now?
Lord Mayor. Oh, Alan, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Cumming for the question. Certainly, the dividends from CBIC have been expended across council's operations. In terms of the exact allocation of those funds, I don't readily have that information available. But fair to say, we've made a commitment now, the Lord Mayor made a commitment recently, that any dividends from CBIC would be directed to acquiring and creating new park and recreation space. I think this is an admirable objective. It's something that the community wants. This was evident as a result of the Plan Your Brisbane and Brisbane's Future Blueprint work. So this is something that's totally aligned to the wishes of the community. The determination that these funds would be directly allocated to these purposes provides us with a useful benchmark to be able to answer this type of question in the future. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Richards.
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Hammond. Councillor Hammond, council is currently working on the Shawncliffe Escarpment Management Plan, which will be shaped around rejuvenation and protection of the iconic Shawncliffe foreshore. Can you outline for the chamber how council intends to keep Shawncliffe clean and green and protect Brisbane's lifestyle?
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you councillor Richards for the question. Brisbane is the most biodiverse city in the country, which is why we need to protect all our natural spaces across our beautiful city. We are developing the new Shawncliffe Escarpment Management Plan to nurture and protect this significant natural landscape feature. The Shawncliffe Escarpment is a unique natural landscape feature within the Sandgate Foreshore Park, contributing to a clean, green and sustainable Brisbane. Council is seeking community feedback to help inform the Shawncliffe Escarpment Management Plan and ensure it aligns with the community's desires and values. We want to protect and create green space, and keeping Brisbane clean and green will make our city more livable and sustainable for future generations. The Shawncliffe Escarpment is a significant natural landscape feature of Brisbane's northern foreshore. The proposed management plan will provide the future vision for the escarpment and related actions for how council plans to manage the escarpment in the short, medium and long term future. This will also include the ecological and recreational values and maintain and enhance. The Shawncliffe Escarpment Management Plan will be shaped around five key themes: site significance, erosion, scenic views, access and revegetation and weed management. Shawncliffe Escarpment is known for its cultural, natural and environmental significance. The escarpment's height and length, edge to the bay and the natural vegetation make it a unique feature along the Brisbane foreshore. Although the escarpment offers several established formal paths between the top and bottom, a number of informal paths have been well worn over decades. The management plan will investigate visitor use and movement through the site and will look to redirect access from unsustainable bank areas. Protecting and rejuvenating the vegetation is a vital part of improving bank stability and overall amenity, including addressing the spread of invasive weeds. Mr Chair, we sent out yesterday the residents of Shawncliffe for their knowledge and we're seeking their input. This side of the chamber want to encourage all residents in the local area to put their views across for this important project that we're putting forward. This project will help us to continue to be green, clean, green and sustainable. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Thanks. Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, council recently and proactively prepared an MOU with the state government at a major Brisbane hospital regarding road safety improvements to address important road safety upgrade concerns. Will you ensure your administration undertakes the same process to progress widening of the Low Rail Bridge at Corinda to ensure that this important safety and congestion busting project progresses?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Johnston for the question. I know that the issue of the rail bridge and the rectification of the issues associated with it are very important to her, and also very important to Mark Bailey as well. And so I can understand why she's raising this issue. Look, we have put forward a draft MOU in relation to the other issue that she mentioned. And, look, we do appreciate the opportunity when we're doing joint projects together to get an MOU in place or some form of formal agreement to explain how the process will work going forward. And so there's something we would do on many projects where the state government is involved, and I think it is the right and responsible thing to do. However, in this case, I will need to come back to you with some more information once I've had a further look at it to confirm what our approach will be going forward. I do know that we often have trouble getting agreements out of the state government when it comes to these type of matters. So certainly, you know, we're keen to do our part in progressing important projects, but this is one that I'll have to take on notice and answer more fully at a later stage.
Further questions? Councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Marks, that this council now break for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
On the contrary, no? The ayes have it.
We're now adjourned.
We're going to recommence question time, there is fourteen minutes on the clock. councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I have a question for the Chair of the Finance and Administration Committee councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, council's professional inclusion programme provides council placements for refugees who hold overseas qualifications. Can you outline for the chamber how this programme is helping our local economy and building for a better Brisbane?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor McLaughlin for the question. And councillor McLaughlin, if you'd have been a bit more mobile last week, you would have been able to attend the presentation where the Professionals' Inclusion Programme has covered. As you have mentioned, the Professionals' Inclusion Programme provides a three months placement programme for refugees with overseas qualifications. For refugees assimilating into the Australian work environment can be a challenge. The programme not only provides three months of paid employment within council, but also one-on-one career development and support to nurture their development. Council has recognised that transitioning into Australia, especially as a refugee, can have its difficulties, and there are several sensitivities that are required to be taken into consideration. This programme is especially designed to provide unique, tailored support where required to give the participants experience within the workplace, but also the tools to be able to gain employment outside of council. This programme is an outcome of council's inclusion blueprint, which is an internal plan to ensure our workplace can benefit from diversity and inclusion. The overarching principles of the inclusion blueprint are to reduce disadvantage and increase social, civil and economic participation. One of the priorities of the inclusion blueprint was to increase workplace participation and opportunities for people with culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds, including refugees. As part of the Professionals' Inclusion Programme, council's seven refugees with various skill sets and backgrounds are undertaking a three months placement within council. Our seven participants are from Syria, Eritrea and the Democratic Republic of Congo with qualifications in medical engineering, social work, business management, economics and commerce. And it goes on, medicine, urban planning and information technology, so very well qualified people. Their placements are in the transport for Brisbane, organisational services, city planning and sustainability, Brisbane infrastructure and lifestyle and community services areas. What we know is that we can learn from what diversity and inclusion brings us, as well as open ourselves to a number of new talents and skills. Already, from the seven participants, a number have been shortlisted for internal jobs within council. A number of others have had the opportunity to seek employment outside and are obviously developing the skills to present themselves to external employers. Many of the participants have said that this is their first opportunity to obtain employment in Australia, and this is seen as an important step in their transition into Australia. As we all know, employment is a key cornerstone in people's lives. The Professionals' Inclusion Programme is not the only employment programme within council that focuses on diversity and inclusion. As part of our tertiary work experience employment programme, we have a target of 100 international students. The tertiary work experience programme provides work experience for high-performing Brisbane-based tertiary students. Placement is for up to thirty days for international students' placements and will depend on their visa requirements. In the past, we've had students from all over the world, including Ghana, Mauritius, Saudi Arabia, Norway and Sri Lanka. Through this programme, council supports the students to upskill them to be able to find placement following their studies. The council also has the Disability Action at Work Programme, which provides paid work experience and career development over sixteen weeks for three days a week for people with a disability. The Disability at Work Programme gives participants confidence in managing their careers despite their disabilities. It also provides team leaders and managers with the resources and skills to be able to build an environment that welcomes diversity and inclusion. Rather than turning someone away, managers and team leaders are encouraged to find a solution to enable a person with a disability to undertake their tasks. Council makes adjustments to the workplace, such as accessing dyslexia font for dyslexia, as well as making physical adjustments to accommodate employees in wheelchairs. In order to make these programmes successful, council spends the time finding work-ready individuals, placing them in roles that meet both the needs of the individual and the needs of the business. Working in a collaborative manner like this can be highly rewarding, not only for the employees in question, but also for their co-workers. It builds collaboration and empathy in the workplace, which are key characteristics of successful organisations. Thank you.
Further questions? councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, my question is to Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Hammond. Councillor Hammond, twelve months on, what action has the BCC LNP administration taken to ban plastic bottles, straws and helium balloons at council functions? Has any action been taken to apply the ban to events which are partly or fully funded by Brisbane City Council grants? Will this administration go further and extend the plastics ban to prohibiting the use of all single-use plastic items?
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you councillor Cummings for the question, and I will start by saying this council, under the leadership of Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinar, is absolutely dedicated to a clean, green and sustainable Brisbane. Last year, twelve months ago, yes, we brought into this chamber about helium balloons, plastic straws and single-use plastic bottles, and I touched on that just previously when we did the motion. As part of the agreement for any funded council event, part of their agreement is that they not to have helium balloons or plastic straws at the event. We are also, as I touched on before, do not encourage single-use plastic water bottles. As I said before, we are working with our community groups to seek alternatives for this, just like the Greenheart Fair, again, come on down, Seventh Brigade Park, term side, I welcome you to attend. You will see there that we hand out plastic bottles and we have water stations at these events. We stand strong, this side of the chamber, to encourage people and community groups, not just at our council-funded events, but we're showing leadership across the city that we are making a stance on this and trying to make a clean, more clean, green, sustainable city. I will note that Minister Dick did not follow that at the last weekend's federal elec-- sorry, Milton Dick, sorry, wrong minister. Mr Dick did not follow that at the federal election on the weekend. He had heaps of helium balloons, hundreds of helium balloons. So, I would like Milton Dick not to use helium balloons or any election, to use helium balloons at election days. That goes on from the single-use plastic wrap that we will not be using at this side of the chamber in council elections. We stand strong and work with our community, my May Fair, and hopefully when you have fairs, councillor Cumming, that you are talking to your community groups.
Point of order. Councillor Cumming.
Point of order, there are two questions. Has any action been taken to apply the ban to events which are partly or fully funded by BCC grants? And will the administration go further and extend the plastics ban to prohibiting the use of all single-use plastic items? I would like the Chair to answer those two questions.
I think councillor Cumming, one of the issues is that the first part of the question probably should be directed at the chairman for lifestyle, but councillor Hammond, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As I said before, it is part of the agreement that we have at council events, I've seen the agreement, I've worked through with my community groups with the agreement, to not use plastic straws, helium balloons and to phase out single-use water bottles.
Well, I'd like to thank councillor Marks for her question and also for her interest in the programme. This administration is proud to lead Australia's most sustainable city through our continued commitment to creating a clean and green Brisbane. A vital part of that commitment is ensuring that we are doing everything possible to reduce food waste to landfill. Nationally, Australians dispose of $8 billion worth of edible food each year. In 2017-18, financial year, Brisbane residents disposed of 78,000 tonnes of food, that's an average of 60 kilogram per person, not to mention the fact that food waste represents the highest volume of material in the average Brisbane rubbish bin at 24%. However, we are fortunate to be councillors in this chamber honoured with the task of representing the residents of Brisbane whose passion and enthusiasm is second to none when it comes to working hard to reducing food waste. So I'm sure it comes as no surprise that together we have achieved a lot in just one year, we have reduced our food waste to landfill by 7%, but there's always more work to be done, and that's why council in October 2016 began our Community Composting Hubs Programme. We are always on the search for more ways in which we can bolster our efforts to reduce waste to landfill, and I'm particularly excited to have this opportunity to talk about council's work in this space today, as Brisbane very recently joined the rest of the world in celebrating International Composting Awareness Week from the 5th to the 11th of May. As part of these celebrations, residents got involved in a special series of compost workshops at our tip shops in Gibung and Archerfield to learn all the latest and greatest tips and tricks to getting composting. And we're the first to receive council's composting discount vouchers that we launched last week as part of International Composting Awareness Week. As part of this initiative, residents who get involved in the compost or worm farm workshops receive a voucher to buy a compost bin or a worm farm at a discounted price from council's tip shop. This great new initiative is all about making it easier and more affordable for residents to compost organic food scraps at home. And what's even more exciting is that each compost bin or worm farm sold at the council's tip shop will not only help create a clean and green Brisbane, but will also support the incredible Endeavour Foundation to support people with a disability. The Endeavour Foundation will receive a $5.50 donation for each compost bin sold and a $6 donation for each worm farm sold using a voucher. So that's a win for your hip pocket and a big win for the amazing Endeavour Foundation and all the people that benefit from the wonderful work that they do. Of course, this initiative accompanies council's Community Composting Hub Programme, which continues to grow in leaps and bounds since its launch in 2016. Since then, we have opened 22 community composting hubs across the city, including one which opened last month at Carrawatha Forest Discovery Centre, and last Sunday, we were very excited to launch yet another community composting hub at Downfall Creek Bushland Centre. More than 100 people attended, so we're very grateful to councillor Hammond and councillor Wyndham for arranging extra caddies for the people to be collected from their ward offices. I encourage local councillors and residents to get involved with this great programme that helps to decrease organic waste to landfill, convert food scraps into a valuable resource for soil, educate residents about reducing waste. It's not only a great initiative to reduce food waste, but also a great opportunity for our community to connect, and it really is a fantastic example of what we can achieve and with a bit of good old-fashioned community spirit. The new composting hub opening at Downfall Creek Bushland Centre is testament to the growing number of Brisbane residents wanting to get involved, with more than 4,000 registered participants and volunteers so far. Over 245,000 litres of organic food waste has been diverted from landfill since council's programme started. And to put that in perspective, Mr Chair, that's more than 1,000 wheelie bins full of food saved from landfill. Residents can also register through council's website to collect their very own free kitchen caddy from their local ward office and to collect their fruit and vegetable scraps to take to the local hub. Our fantastic volunteers in the community gardens will then take those scraps and convert them into valuable compost for our local community gardens. Council is continually looking at adding new hubs to the list to allow more and more residents to be able to easily access a composting hub. And in order for that to work well, it needs to have dedicated group of volunteers who are willing to maintain and use the compost.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired.
Oh, thank you.
And so has the time for question time as well. So, Lord Mayor, can I invite you to move the Establishment and Coordination Committee reports, please?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 13th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 13th of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Yes, on a number of different items. First of all, just wanted to update all councillors on the lighting up of our city's iconic assets this week and the reasons behind the different colours being displayed on those assets. I can say that today and also on Thursday, City Hall, Radcliffe Place, Victoria Bridge and the Story Bridge will be lit up in red for National Volunteer Week. Obviously, a critical importance across the community and an acknowledgement of our fantastic volunteers right across the city and so many organisations. Tomorrow, both the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in orange to support Wear Orange Wednesday, which is an acknowledgement to our State Emergency Service volunteers and recognising the great contribution they make to our city and our state, and particularly in a state that is prone to natural disasters and all types of interesting things happening. So, on Friday, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in red to support the Red Shield Appeal, which is the Salvation Army's primary and largest annual fundraising event and goes to support thousands and thousands of families in need. And finally, on Saturday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and City Hall will be lit up in yellow in celebration of the Brisbane Art Design Festival, BAD, which councillor Maddock is absolutely passionate about, as are all of us. We had a great Panieri yesterday in Musgrave Park. I understand that the election didn't dampen there Saturday, they were a bit concerned that numbers would be down because of the election. It appears that everyone voted early so they could go to Panieri because they had one of their biggest days ever at Panieri, and it's great to see the local community coming together to support what is one of Queensland's, I think Queensland's oldest multicultural festival and certainly an incredibly successful community event. Many people aren't aware, but the funds raised through the different stalls are all going back into local Greek community organisations, so they're all operated, or many of the stalls are operated by Greek community associations, and they use this as their big annual fundraising event, and the money made from selling food and other things on the day, across the two days, goes back into the community. So it's just a fantastic event and one that council is proud to support. It's now been going for more than forty years and is truly one of the great festivals of Brisbane, and long may it reign. We have the items in front of us, three items. The first one, which I think most people would agree, the name itself is particularly dry and the contents are also particularly dry, and that is the Competition and Consumer Act policy. We're updating two policies which ensure that council is compliant with the Competition and Consumer Act when undertaking procurement activities. Obviously, this is a very important thing, it may be dry, but something that we need to get on and deliver, and it's all about making sure that we update our delegations and policies when we procure services to comply with all relevant legislation and standards. Now, item B is the QUU Participation Agreement. As councillors are aware, QUU operates the water and sewage services for Brisbane City Council, as well as Ipswich, Lockyer Valley, Scenic Rim and Somerset councils. QUU provides these services to areas by way of a participation agreement. QUU have approached the participating councils to request changes to the participation agreement. These changes include implementing changes agreed by participating councils to reflect the updates from the corporate plan, which went through council in July last year, reflecting QUU's operations and removing outdated or redundant items, updating to align and reflect with the amendments to legislation, and finally clarification and simplification of a number of clauses. All councils are required to agree to the participation agreement by resolution to council before it can be implemented. So what's coming through today, similar things are going through the other councils that are involved in QUU. Finally, at item C, the Banyo-Northgate Neighbourhood Plan. This is the second time the Banyo-Northgate Neighbourhood Plan has come to the chamber, and this follows the public consultation period from 2nd of November to the 17th of December last year, where council received 85 submissions. The draft neighbourhood plan provides up-to-date guidance for six suburbs, including Banyo, Northgate and parts of Nudgee, Nunda, Virginia and Hendrick, including parts of Brisbane's northern industrial area. The draft neighbourhood plan supports jobs and business opportunities in Brisbane's economy by retaining and protecting well-located land that is currently zoned for industrial uses to meet the strong demand for industrial land across the city in accordance with the administration's business industrial, Brisbane industrial strategy. The Banyo-Northgate Station precinct supports the redevelopment of old industry and warehousing into new opportunities for business and advanced manufacturing industries that require a skilled workforce. These precincts are highly connected to the public transport system and accessible to nearby, well-established residential areas. This makes them attractive areas to not only work, but also to live and play in that one neighbourhood. So I commend that particular item to the chamber. I did briefly want to touch on the question that was raised by councillor Johnston about the Oxley Road rail underpass, and from my reading of this situation, it appears that the state member, Mark Bailey, has initiated this issue. He wants something to be done to widen the rail bridge. The rail bridge is obviously a constraint in the road network. In the approaches to the rail bridge, the road is the equivalent of two lanes in each direction wide, the rail bridge narrows down to two lanes or one lane in each direction, and so Mr Bailey would like to see that bridge expanded. Now, obviously, it is a Queensland rail bridge with sections of council road leading into it. Any work done to the bridge would have to be funded by the state government. Mark Bailey wrote to the former Lord Mayor in June last year, saying in the lead-up to our own budget at the time, that the Lord Mayor should allocate some money towards this project, which would be a joint project. Since that time, we haven't been able to discover any state funding that's available for the project. We've asked various officers, we've written various letters to try and determine what state funding, if any, is available for this project, and we haven't received an answer. So it's very easy for a state member to write to us on a local issue saying, yeah, we need to do something about this issue, but this is a state rail bridge that's involved, and Mark Bailey, and not only as a local member but as the Minister for Transport and Main Roads, needs to come to the party and explain how much money is on the table from the state government level. We have indeed asked him to send us a MOU or a draft MOU, and we have not had anything forthcoming. So if this is indeed a priority for Mark Bailey, then I would expect that he would do those two things, which include confirming that there's state funding available and also sending us a draft copy of an MOU. These things haven't occurred, but look, I haven't lost hope, I'm sure they will arrive any day now. We will get confirmation of a significant investment of state funds in this project, and we will get our draft agreement. We will continue to await that outcome, and we're certainly happy to work with the state government to achieve a positive outcome here.
Further speakers? councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Chair. In relation to item A, this is, I guess, a legal necessity and important that it be this act be complied with by the Brisbane City Council, so we're happy to accept what's being proposed. In relation to item B, just got some, few questions there about how the participation percentages are calculated, and just asked the Chair if they could supply that information. I do that participation percentages, also mean that's the percentage of profits that each of the councils receives. There doesn't seem to be a lot of detail in the ENC report on that, and what changes have been made in the participation percentages for each of the, for the Brisbane City Council under the old agreement compared to the new agreement and how that was worked out. And also, there's reference to board members, and I know in relation to some of these boards, the information is publicly available, and I would ask the Chair if the, what changes have been made in board remuneration in terms of the rate being received by board members, and I would appreciate receiving that information as well. In relation to item C, the neighbourhood plan, councillor Cassidy as our spokesperson will be speaking on that issue.
Further speakers? councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items A, B and C. However, I'll kick off with item C, the Banyo-Northgate Neighbourhood Plan, and I'm delighted to see the draft plan reach this point in its journey. It's been a very thorough process to date. As I've said in this place before, this plan will be transformational for a number of key locations in the Northgate Ward, with benefits flowing to the whole community. The plan area is quite unique in that it has a train line that runs north to south through the ward with four train stations in the plan area and two just outside. This provides a unique transport spine that provides ready public transport access to key locations captured by the plan. Importantly, two of these train stations, Northgate and Binder, are adjacent to large land holdings that are significantly underutilised, presenting a truly unique opportunity to open up dynamic employment hubs with mixed use and exclusive right to public transport. The range of benefits will accrue from this plan include: it will optimise significantly underutilised land, it will leverage the train line that runs through Northgate Ward, it'll improve access to the Binder station, which is currently somewhat landlocked, it will provide additional green and community space, it'll improve local amenity and it'll enhance character protection. And I'd like to provide additional detail on each of these items. So in terms of optimising significantly underutilised land, as I mentioned, there are two large sites adjacent to Northgate Station and Binder Station that are currently underutilised. Both of these sites present with latent potential to significantly improve employment outcomes and amenity at these locations, with the possibility for residential uses as well. The zoning changes will support the development of low-impact industry, business and commercial activities with scope for residential elements. The types of businesses that might emerge in these locations are wide and could include advanced manufacturing, creative industries, research and technology business, low-impact industry, general commercial activities, retail and the list goes on. In terms of Northgate Station, the Banyo-Northgate Neighbourhood Plan will provide the catalyst to turn the industrial areas around Northgate Station into a thriving employment hub, supporting a range of industry types such as low-impact industry, commercial, technical, creative industries. With respect to the site near Binder Station, and this truly is a unique site, it's a very large site, in excess of 13 hectares, and at the moment it has an extremely low employment density with the bulk of the site being used for warehousing. Given its close proximity to Binder Station, this is a unique opportunity to build a first-class employment precinct with complementary retail, hospitality offerings and supportive residential components, and importantly, additional green space. The site, which currently employs perhaps a couple of hundred people, has the potential to employ several thousand people. Both of these key... Both of these key sites present ideally as employment hubs, given their proximity to the airport, the motorway, Trade Coast, and complementary business partners in industrial precincts in Northgate, Hamilton, and Deegan Wards. With respect to leveraging the train line that runs through the study area, as mentioned earlier, the plan area benefits from the existence of a train line that runs north-south through the study area. This not only provides great public transport to these key locations, it provides handy local connectivity to the following locations, namely: the shopping centre at Turnbull, which offers a wide range of retail and dining options; Nunda Village, which offers great dining and boutique retail; Northgate, which offers a range of craft breweries and much more in the future; Binder, which in due course will have a wide range of retail and dining offerings; Banyo Village, which currently offers retail and dining options; and Nudgee, which is primarily residential. In terms of improved access to Binder Station, as I mentioned, this station is largely landlocked. It's very difficult to get to, there's only one access point, and that's through a cul-de-sac in an industrial area. By opening up this particular site, it will improve not only vehicle access through the site area, but it will provide access for the community from the Virginia and Banyo where they'll be able to actually walk through and access the train station from the western side of the train line at present, that's virtually impossible. So a community that until now has had virtually no access to that train station in due course will have access to a train station, and obviously, the travel time to Brisbane is probably something in the order of seventeen minutes. So that's going to be a terrific outcome for that part of the community. As I mentioned, the, there'll be additional opportunity to provide green and community space, particularly in this Binder site, given it's currently about thirteen hectares. This would be expected to be complemented not only by retail and hospitality offerings and, but also other facilities. The potential here is to build a truly vibrant commercial and residential outcome for the community, and this site in particular, I find particularly exciting. As I mentioned, a number of these developments will improve local amenity, and the areas that I believe is particularly going to benefit will be the areas around Northgate, Virginia, and Banyo. In particular, those, Northgate and Virginia, don't really enjoy a terrific amount of amenity. Residents who live in that area actually have to walk to shops and hospitality offerings, they, sorry, have to drive to these sort of offerings rather than walk, and these developments will potentially open up terrific amenity within walking distance. So in summary, this plan will create more jobs through better utilisation of key sites in a range of industries and businesses. It'll increase residential offerings in key locations and further protect character houses. It will improve access to public transport, particularly rail. It'll enhance resident and employee lifestyle through improved retail offerings and additional green space, and it will enhance live, work, and play opportunities. So I look forward to this plan reaching its conclusion, ideally in the near future, and landowners taking the opportunity to transform some of these key sites for the benefit of the wider community, and I commend the plan to the chamber. Moving on to item B, which is the Q U U Participation Agreement, and I'll seek to answer some of councillor Cummings' questions. Obviously, as the Lord Mayor indicated, Q U U provide services to a number of councils by way of a participation agreement. This is a requirement of the Distribution and Retail Restructuring Act. In the context of this particular change, this has been driven by Q U U's corporate planning activities, and the last Q U U corporate plan, 2018 to 2023, came to this chamber in July 2018. The plan forecasts additional revenue payable to shareholders and councillor Cumming, we're an eighty-five per cent shareholder in the, in Q U U, and would receive eighty-five per cent of any dividends declared in any given year. The expectation is that dividends over the next few years will increase from previously advised plans, and the expectation is that dividends over the next two years will be a hundred and fifty-three million and a hundred and fifty-nine million respectively, of which eighty-five per cent flows to Brisbane City Council, and accordingly, those figures are a hundred and thirty million and a hundred and thirty-five million. So that answers your questions regarding the dividend flow. The changes to the board, you know, these board remuneration policies are reviewed regularly by the board, and these will determine the appropriate compensation for board members, given the size and complexity of the operations, their qualifications and experience, the industry sector that is being considered, and the time requirements required to be a full-time director on that particular board. The current board remuneration policy states that remuneration will increase with C P I each year in accordance with the corporate plan. So the current board members, I don't, I'm not sure that that's particularly part of this policy, I think it was more a reflection of some of the changes to, to the existing board policy and how they were compensated. Now, just quickly, if I've got some time, I'll quickly touch upon item A, the Competition and Consumer Act policy. As the Lord Mayor indicated, this is a policy that-
Councillor Allen, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd just ask at the outset that item C be taken serio- item for voting purposes, please.
I'm going to repeat that to you, that item C be taken serio- item.
Yes, thank you.
For vote, for voting alone? For voting?
Yeah, just-
Just for voting, yep.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr Chair. So on, on item C, the Banyo-Northgate Neighbourhood Plan, at the outset, I want to thank the neighbourhood planning team, who have kept me up-to-date throughout this process, Shaun and the, and the whole team that worked over the last couple of years on this. They try their best to accommodate what the community feedback they receive into a plan that then this administration brings to this place. And the Banyo-Northgate Neighbourhood Plan isn't all bad, not all bad at all, there are certainly some aspects in there, in terms of a document that is shaping and protecting the long-term future, and amenity of those neighbourhoods. It's not too bad, but in some serious areas, we think it is a missed opportunity, unfortunately. There were eighty-five formal submissions on the draft neighbourhood plan, and most of those were around traffic and transport. And if you know anything about that particular area of Brisbane, it is little wonder why the majority of those issues that people raised were around traffic and transport issues there. Very old area that, at its, at its design, particularly around that open-level crossing at Banyo, and the, and the road network and the street network around there, and how that residential area interacts with those industrial areas, certainly wasn't designed originally and built for a huge amount of density. So around the accessibility issues and the Banyo open-level crossing, the, the most talked about issue at those community planning team meetings, and I only had the opportunity to attend one of those, the one I was at, and then reading through the minutes of those other C P T meetings, that the accessibility and traffic issues were one of those most important issues that people raised, particularly around addressing, addressing those issues for mobility and accessibility within the suburbs and the neighbourhoods around there. The plan is a lost opportunity for council to set out clear expectations of the future repurposing of industrial land around train stations in terms of accessibility and traffic. I do think the changes that councillors proposed through the neighbourhood plan around the type of industrial use is not bad, and that is looking to the future, but in terms of those industrial sites or sites surrounding industrial areas, that will be repurposed and rezoned in the future to residential use, in some cases to L M R, medium-density around those stations, which does join areas of traditional building character overlay as well, that there is a lack of planning around that transport infrastructure that is, is required there. Particularly around the Banyo open-level crossing, and the, the area of the plan is intersected by the Shauncliff Line as well, and there's not any, I suppose, consideration given in terms of additional crossings or dealing with, as part of, as development happens, and dealing with the issue of the Banyo, Banyo open-level crossing. And we're going to see throughout that Banyo area, an increase in density through there, not a huge increase, but an increase nonetheless, and it's already a significant problem for people in that area. In the Nunda component, not all of Nunda is included in this neighbourhood plan, but part of Nunda is, and it is land that, along the Schultz Canal area, that will be rezoned to low-medium density along there. And council did just recently refuse an application for low-medium density in this area that is now, I believe, before, that is currently being appealed by the developer as well. So there are concerns by residents around the buffer between that increase in density along the Schultz Canal and those green spaces and the waterway along there. In terms of protection of character housing, particularly in and around Northgate, was focused on, and the interesting thing in talking to the team that I noticed is that a lot of properties were being removed from that area to reflect current, current uses. So through the survey of this neighbourhood plan, you know, laid bare this administration's approach to planning and development in those old character areas, where we see no longer are there any intact, in some of these streets, intact character housing, there is the odd character house, which will now no longer have any protection under that T B C in areas there. But also, that, that focus in around the Northgate area, residents have expressed concerns that other areas of the neighbourhood plan haven't had the same focus in terms of protecting character, and the property that we've talked about here in recent times, at 431 St Vincent's Road, and the 14 Kelly Road farmhouse, were only included and protected after residents themselves raised those issues. And, and other, other redevelopment issues around significant sites, councillor Allen has already talked about one of those large sites there, there's also the Energex, the former Energex site there, and I know they have attempted, I suppose, to come up with some planning solutions around that, but it is very high-level, and in some ways vague in terms of connectability through those areas, and less prescriptive than residents, I think, would have liked in zoning it emerging communities, and not, not, I suppose, dedicating road space and open spaces and things like that through that area. So I think the, in essence, people in this area were, were accepting of change in this process as well, and they're not necessarily against development here, but the feedback that we see from residents is that council isn't appropriately planning for that growth and dealing with what are already significant issues for those people, for those, those people living there, in terms of accessibility and connectivity within this neighbourhood plan area, particularly crossing that train line, which is quite a hard barrier, and I think people feel, and what is evident in those submissions that were made through the neighbourhood planning process, is that we're going to see increased development here, not huge increase in development, but additional people, additional cars on these roads, and not planning for that transport getting people around, whether it's by private car, by public transport, or by active transport. So while this is certainly not the worst neighbourhood plan we have seen, on balance, we don't think council has gone far enough and got it right in this instance.
Further speakers, councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair, and I just rise to the debate on item C, which is the Banyo-Northgate Neighbourhood Plan, which is here for council's endorsement before it goes for the second state interest review check, Mr Chair. This plan started back in 2016, it's gone through the standard process that we have for our award-winning neighbourhood planning process in this place, the strategy was commenced and completed back in 2017. It went to the first state interest check in Sept, from March through to September back in 2018. That seems like a very large, long period of time, not within probably the ministerial guidelines, timeframes for the state to provide their state interest check, of course, as we know they do. It went to public notification back in November through to December 2018, and we've been working to review the submissions and alter the plan to address issues that have been raised by the residents as part of that public consultation process. Mr Chair, I, I almost thought for a second that the Labour Party were going to support a neighbourhood plan in this place, but councillor Cassidy has dashed my hopes this evening, Mr Chair, because while it's not all bad, and not too bad, he did then, it's bad, it's bad enough to, to take that interjection from, from you, councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, it's bad enough. And we're getting better. Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I, I do, I do enjoy your ongoing support in this role, but this plan, but what I do, what I do take from councillor Cassidy's speech, and if you listen to the subtle undertones, is that there's not enough density in this plan, because he said, you miss the opportunity to put more density around the train stations, you miss the opportunity to rezone parts-
Point of order against you, councillor Burke, councillor Cassidy.
Claim to be misrepresented.
The claim is noted. Councillor Burke.
Sorry, Mr Chair, I was saying councillor Cassidy did indeed say in Hansard that the plan didn't go far enough to transition industrial land around the train stations to higher-density residential, be it low-medium-density or medium-density residential. And again, just like they were found the other day to not be supporting workers in this country, this is a job and economic growth precinct of the city. There is five thousand jobs that are going to be created in this neighbourhood plan area, we expect, between now and the lifetime of the plan. There is going to be an additional two thousand residents moving to this part of the city. We need employment centres inside the bounds of the city of Brisbane. It might be the Labour Party policy to force industry and employment centres and jobs outside of the city of Brisbane boundaries, but this administration has a pretty clear agenda of making sure that we support jobs within the city of Brisbane, and we have local employment centres. Why? Because it cuts down carbon emissions, you don't have to drive as far. Why? Because it cuts down costs of goods, because the goods don't have to be driven or delivered as far. So you need to have employment centres that support the changing industrial and business mix that we have in our city, and this neighbourhood plan starts to help transition some of those centres around the train stations, next to residential, into those future employment nodes that we need to support our growing city. So you see around particularly the train stations, the changes in some of the zoning that helps facilitate that particular work. So we're moving to this new industry and business zoning, and that's being done to help address some of the new technologies and new businesses that we're seeing across the city. So mixed industry and business zoning around Binder Station will see a better opportunity for more employment in that precinct, transitioning what were old industrial warehouses, large buildings that suited the industry of the time when they were built, probably the best part of fifty or sixty years ago, to the new format for doing business in the city, for the, to respond to the changing way that businesses conduct their activities. We also see, though, near that train station, low-medium-density residential housing being put in, to help facilitate some growth around that station. Of course, there's a large parcel of land on the other side of that train station, which is also held in private ownership, and at one point will be rezoned, or sorry, be developed as well. We also see a Banyo railway station, low-medium-density residential being put in on the northern side or the western side of the train line there. So while councillor Cassidy might lament that this plan doesn't go far enough, we've done it in consultation with the community. We've gone out, we've engaged with them, and councillor Allen has been integral in that work, where he's gone and engaged with his local residents about how they would like to see their local community change and evolve. And it's interesting to note that this neighbourhood plan covers six suburbs, because occasionally in this place, we get told that neighbourhood plans are only of a small, they're one suburb, Eight Mile Plains is a one-suburb neighbourhood plan, other neighbourhood plans have been small, this neighbourhood plan has taken a community of interest that covers that corridor that councillor Allen- that councillor Allen talked about and also provides the continuity for the employment corridor that exists along this railway corridor. We see changes to the neighbourhood plan that's coming through, where we reinforce some of the existing provisions inside the city plan. So for example, around the Bando District Centre, I think the Lord Mayor talked about this, the four stories is being brought in line with the district centres code across the city, but we also see other changes for parts of the plan area where we're bringing them in line with the neighbourhood plan, sorry, with the city plan provisions. See 119 properties being put into the traditional building character overlay, we see five properties being placed into the heritage overlay, as well as four properties being put onto the pre-1911 building overlay, and nine properties being put into the commercial character building overlay. So there is a lot of work and a lot of detail that has gone into this plan, I want to commend the council officers. What I did find interesting, though, in councillor Cassidy's speech, was his lamenting of the lack of transport options for the residents in Nudgee, Banyo, Northgate and Turnbull. Because of course, this area is bounded by the Gateway Motorway and Sandgate Road, and it has a very large railway corridor with four stations in the plan area and two stations just outside the plan area. And of course, the cutting of train services probably didn't help, the cutting of train services by the state government probably hasn't helped transport solutions in this area. The lack of work to Sandgate Road by the state government probably hasn't helped transport solutions in this area. The upgrade to the Banyo railway level crossing probably hasn't helped transport solutions in this area. So while councillor Cassidy likes to, you know, be very quick to go, well, council should be doing more, his state colleagues should be doing more to actually help facilitate some of those transportation issues in this area too, through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cassidy, because while those on the other side in the Labour Party are very quick to try and blame this administration for all of the ills of the city when it comes to transportation, we have demonstrated time and time again to be doing the heavy lifting when it comes to investing in public transport, when it comes to be investing in active transport and also when it comes to investing in motorised transport across the city. And we're continually frustrated by the state government when it comes to some of these investments. So the plan will come from council to the state government, I hope that the state government process it quickly and stick to their ministerial guidelines, timeframes, so that we can get this plan back into council and provide some certainty to the residents of Nudgee, Banyo, Northgate and Turnbull about the future growth of their wonderful part of Brisbane.
Now councillor Cassidy had a claim to be misrepresented, but please limit your comments to the claim and please don't relitigate your argument, councillor Cassidy.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I didn't say that I lamented that industrial land was going to be rezoned, wasn't being rezoned for residential, there is a section that is around the Binder train station, and I said, what I said was that it's a missed opportunity in planning for accessibility and connectivity where the upzoning is happening.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, just briefly on items, I think it's B and C, and I'd just start with QU. I just wanted to say that it, well, first of all, congratulations to councillor Allen, because he hasn't got the memo amongst the LMP councillors, that you're not supposed to tell people that you own QU, you've spent, I don't know, the last eight years essentially denying that QU is ours, and it was very nice to hear him say that we owned 85% of QU, because that's normally what I say and councillors on this side of the chamber say. So it's good to know that the new finance chairman is also aware of that. The concern I have largely relates to the huge amount of money that we draw out of QU and how effectively that's used within our own budget and how it's used. And I think that we should be having more of a discussion about linking those funds into drainage improvements, linking those funds into the backflow valves that we need, making sure that we're doing the right thing by our stormwater network, instead of that money just going into general revenue and being used for marketing and everything else. So it strikes me that we should probably be having a slightly broader debate about what we're doing with QU, rather than, you know, simply enshrining some of these changes about directors and, you know, they're all very odd, in fact. One of the changes, basically in the summary document that we've got, says that essentially you can't sell to anybody else, but then when you go and read the participation agreement in, I think it's point five, you can, as long as you've got the minister's permission. So I, you know, what I read in the participation agreement is what's different in council's summary to us as councillors, and that causes me to have concerns about what this administration is actually doing. But my biggest concern is around the huge amount of money we draw out of QU, how we use that money, and I believe it should be more effectively used for stormwater management. We underspend, we underspend in stormwater, I think it's $30 million is all we spend on stormwater, you know, in the city, and that's really not enough. So to me, I think we could be looking at this a little bit differently. Just briefly on the Banyo-Northgate neighbourhood plan. I've had two neighbourhood plans done in my area, both have multiple train stations in them, yes, four, and maybe even, was it Woolangaba in the, no, so yeah, well, four then, in Fairfield, Dutton Park and four in the Sherwood one, you know, they're all a mix of industrial and residential and, you know what happened in my area? We got, we got five stories forced on our community without, without council listening to our community. I opposed it, residents opposed it.
Councillor Johnston, I appreciate you making comments by comparison, but can I just ask you to just, to speak on the Banyo report? But I appreciate what you're doing, but can I just ask you to talk on the report?
I don't intend to speak long on this, but that is my point, thank you, Mr Chairman, that in looking at this neighbourhood plan, there are areas directly around the train stations in these suburbs that are still going to be low-density or low-to-medium density. And, you know, to me, yes, whilst there are some in my area, we had five stories forced on us in communities that didn't want it. So I just, I don't think that planning in this city is being done fairly, I don't think it is being done responsibly to community issues. I fear that some areas get a Rolls-Royce treatment and the rest of us get lumped into giant, yes councillor Burke who's not here, giant areas where, I mean, I don't, oh, he's over there, I don't even know if, you know, there's six different precincts or something in this area? I didn't even get a precinct in the part of the Dutton Park Fairfield neighbourhood plan in my area, we didn't even get a precinct, I mean, there's one down Jonathan's End, I think, around South Brisbane and one around the hospital. But, you know, to me, that just underlies the fact that this council is prepared to do detailed neighbourhood planning in some areas of the city, but it is not prepared to do it in others, and it's not prepared to listen to the community in some parts of the city, particularly where they speak up very clearly about, you know, the issues that they're expecting. So, you know, I appreciate that this is an area undergoing, you know, a fair bit of change, and it doesn't seem, I agree with councillor Cassidy, it doesn't seem to be the worst neighbourhood plan that I've ever seen, but what I can't understand is why, you know, this community gets a Rolls-Royce solution and my communities have had massive, massive zoning changes forced on them with no infrastructure to support them, none of this fine-grained, public realm, you know, kind of thing going on that to make it look pretty and look good, we got nothing. So I just, I just say to all the council officers listening up there that, that to me, you need to be listening more to the communities when you do undertake neighbourhood plans, and it just strikes me that we're seeing, you know, a two-horse race here where some areas seem to be getting a really good process and others are ignored when they raise concerns and seek improvements to their local areas. So with that, I'll sit down.
Further speakers? There being none, Lord Mayor, you'll write a reply? All right, I'll put all those in favour of items A and B, say aye. And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. On item C, all those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
It's a division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook, please ring the bells, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Attendants, please close the gates. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chairman, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour, six against and one abstention.
The ayes have it, please return to your chairs. Can I draw the council's attention to the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee? Deputy Mayor?
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Wyndham, the report of the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr Chair, last week's presentation was an overview of the Public and Active Transport portfolio and just brought the members and a couple of them new up to speed on the work that the division does within council. Amongst many of the roles, the division ensures that Brisbane has an effective and efficient public and active transport system, we work in conjunction with Translink to do our level best to get the approval of the state to implement new routes and new efficiency in the bus and ferry and city cat network. We talked about cycling Brisbane that has almost 22,000 members and the regular correspondence that we get from those members and the discount bike shops around town that they can enjoy. Active school travel reaches more than 24,000 students engaged in the three-year rolling programme with each of those schools, and of course, the better bikeways for Brisbane where we promised at the last election $100 million to deliver those bikeways across the city. We are making good headway with those bikeways, the Botanic Gardens River Walk project beginning last week and earlier this morning, the Lord Mayor and myself did meet here at the Woolangaba Bike Way, which is looking absolutely spectacular, it's almost near completion. But the segregated bikeway with the very clear green lanes with floating bus stops and sound lines, audible lines, is going to be fantastic for the connections from the western suburbs through to the city as well. We talked about bus stops, the part of the discussion at committee around the rolling programmes, and of course, the two separate bodies of work between the maintenance for the proactive and the DDA compliance upgrades that are required by 2022. There are 25 terminals along 22 kilometres of Brisbane's ferry terminals as well, and we know for next week the Guyat Park Ferry Terminal closes to begin its upgrade as well. It was all city cats, ferries, buses, bikes, scooters, all things transport, and I'm looking forward to working in the portfolio to make sure that we are a clean, green and sustainable city, particularly in our public and active transport.
Is there further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on item C, the petition calling on council to take up the state government's offer to widen, not raise, the Low Rail Bridge separating Corinda and Sherwood. Oh, sorry.
I don't think that's in the report.
Oh, I apologise.
That's in a future report, that's in a future report. Is there any, is there any debate on the Public and Active Transport report? Councillor Shree?
Thanks, Mr Chair, and I'd like to thank through you, Councillor Adams, for the committee presentation. There was a great deal to get through and I still had a lot of questions that we didn't have time to answer, which I think for me reinforces the fact that it's a bit silly that we only have a 30-minute committee meeting each week to discover, to discuss all things related to public transport, active transport and now economic development. It seems to me rather ludicrous that councils are expected to make meaningful decisions and have meaningful discussions in such a short space of time for committee meetings. Just first briefly regarding the Woolangaba Bike Way project which was just mentioned, I'm obviously a big supporter of that project and I've even supported losing around 80 street parking bays in order to make that project viable, and it's been great to see that that's progressing, it's taken a lot longer than it needed to and should have, and my comments on that issue are well-known in this chamber. But I just wanted to again emphasise and draw to the chair's attention the ongoing safety concerns regarding the design of the bike lanes to the south of the pedestrian crossing on, outside Princess Plaza. So while Stanley Street itself now has dedicated barrier-separated bike lanes all the way along Stanley Street, Annalee Road does not have any physical separation for the bike lanes for most of the length of the project. In essence, the only protection for cyclists is a little bit of paint. The lanes have gotten slightly wider than they used to be and parking is now banned in them, which is obviously a good step forward, but they're actually not safe for cyclists to ride on. And I think that's a real disappointment, that we've spent millions and millions of dollars on this bikeway project, but it's still not safe to ride on. I certainly wouldn't let my young cousins ride along that corridor, even with adult supervision, and personally, I don't even feel safe riding along there, I usually choose to ride along the footpath of Annalee Road rather than to ride in the bike lanes that council has just created. And I understand that this project has gone through several evolutions and changes of design, that initially council was only planning to do the Stanley Street leg of the project and later expanded to Annalee Road, and I'm very grateful to see that that's happened. But we now have a problem where we've spent millions of dollars and caused a great deal of disruption along that bike, along that road corridor. We've taken away street parking, we've inconvenienced traders throughout the construction process, and yet the bike lanes are not yet safe enough to use, particularly around the slip lanes for Stevens Road and Park Road, but also all the way along Annalee Road, especially outside Dutton Park and Boggo Road jail. Those bike lanes are not wide enough, they do not feel safe, particularly when the speed limit along that corridor is still 50 and 60 kilometres at most times of the day. The solution is quite straightforward, there's now enough width along those lanes to include physical barrier separation. Council offices accept and acknowledge this, but it seems that the private certifier who's connected to the project is unwilling to sign off on physical separation at this stage. So this is a, this is a technical problem where different engineers have subjective views about what's safe and what's appropriate, and the particular engineer who seems to be working on this project doesn't want to sign off on physical separators, even though other traffic engineers might be willing to do so. So I'm not pretending that this is a simple problem and I'm sure council is working through solutions, but I really want to emphasise that the Annalee Road bike lane stretch of this project to the south of the Catherine Street intersection is not safe for riders. The project has, in that stage of the project, has largely been completed now, there is no further significant work to do along that Annalee Road precinct to the south of Catherine Street intersection, but it is not safe enough. We need physical separators to be installed. There are now a range of products on the market that can be dropped in at fairly low cost and for fairly minimal disruption, and it's essential that council does this as soon as the current stage of the project is completed. It would be a mistake to wait six months, a year to see how the project goes, I expect that that's council's intention, to finish it as it is and then watch and learn and make further changes, I understand that impulse, but that is the wrong way forward, because that will mean that for the next six months or a year, there is no measurable increase in the number of cyclists along that corridor because people don't feel safe. So through you, Mr Chair, I want to say to councillor Adams, please don't let this sit on the backburner, it's a really good project, it's going to deliver great things for the area, but we need to get this section of Annalee Road right by installing proper physical separators to ensure that cyclists feel safe along that corridor, that's essential. More generally, I also just wanted to put a question which we didn't get time to explore in the committee meeting, just could councillor Adams please expand a little bit on the process for the council to introduce new bus services that don't have the funding or direct support of the state government? So for example, in the past, council has fully funded city glider services, I'd just like a really quick explanation of what are the processes and procedures that... procedures that council needs to go through in order to install new bus services where the state government doesn't see those services as necessary and the state government doesn't want to put any funding towards those services?
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, just to take this opportunity to speak about some of the ongoing issues and concerns in the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee now and some of those ongoing issues. As the longest-serving member of the Public Active Transport Committee, I have all this corporate knowledge now that I'm happy to share with others in the chamber, Mr Chair. But very seriously, the issue, the ongoing issue of bus driver safety is something that we have been discussing in that committee now for years and years. And I want to make sure and put councillor Adams on notice, not in an aggressive way or anything, but that that is a, that is a, an issue that is of great importance to the thousands of bus drivers that we have in the Brisbane City Council that work in transport for Brisbane and travelling around to some of the depots already and talking to many of those bus drivers and the union, the RTBU as well, and some of those drivers who are not members of the RTBU. I know that they still feel that is of a significant concern, that I don't believe council is addressing well enough yet. So that is something that we will certainly be keeping on top of there. There are of course other ongoing issues around active transport. And I, I know that councillor Shrinna, when he was the chair, always supported separated cycle lanes more than the previous lord mayor did. And now that he's in that position, this is something, you know, labour councillors have been leading on in this place for the last few years, I certainly hope that councillor Adams will use her position now to advocate more strongly within this administration and council to ensure that cyclist safety is particularly in our CBD areas, right across, right across our city of course, but particularly here in the CBD where we have seen many issues over the last few years, that that is an issue that is at the forefront of her time in this role as well. Of course, we had a presentation this morning, we'll talk about that next week, around our ferry terminals. And we know in a growing city and you see a place like the island of West End over there that is hemmed in on one side by the river and on the other side by some pretty hard infrastructure. The issues of expanding and prioritising our city cat and ferry terminal network will be of great importance and we would certainly like to see a better and sharper focus on things, things like that as well over the next ten months until we have a new administration.
Further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I thank the councillors for their feedback and I'm happy to take on notice the bus planning I can talk about in that committee next week.
I now put the resolution, all those in favour of adopting the report say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Can I draw the attention of the council to the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Cooper?
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the fourteenth of May, two thousand and nineteen be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Cooper, seconded by councillor Huang, that the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday the fourteenth of May, twenty nineteen be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Cooper?
Thank you very much, Mr Chair, Mr Chair, at committee last week we had a presentation on Brisbane Smart Poles. It was, it was a very interesting presentation, it was an opportunity for us to really actually look at what has been proposed and ask a lot of detailed questions. So as we know in this chamber, we have a project which will include the design, supply, installation, operation and maintenance of twenty smart poles. It'll combine smart technology devices while collecting real-time information in particular to help council with our planning and improve the services that we deliver to our community. So the poles will have a central management system for dashboard reporting. They will be able to report real-time data, so they'll be very valuable for council, there'll be a range of different potential functions that they will be able to deliver, whether it is public lighting, creative lighting, pedestrian detection, bicycle detection, environmental noise monitoring, climate monitoring, air quality monitoring, public wifi where appropriate, USB charging ports, all these sorts of facilities, it is very much about customising facilities for the specific locations. There are twenty proposed sites throughout the city and this is the first stage of the rollout of this programme. I note that there is one down there at Winham Forshaw, I know councillor Cumming is very excited about that, very positive about that, so thank you for your enthusiasm. We also will have a reserve list of, for backup or potential expansion opportunities for these particular facilities. We have very much focused in this first phase on streets and pathways, civic and open spaces and skate parks. The budget for the Smart Poles project is two point one seven nine million. The tender, as this chamber is well aware, was awarded in the council meeting of last week with works to begin in July this year and commissioning anticipated by the end of the year. So we look forward to these important new facilities that will really add new features to our local communities. There's also three petitions and I'm happy to respond to any commentary relating to those. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, my apologies for that. I do rise to speak on item C, the petition requesting council urgently take up the Queensland, Queensland government's offer to widen not raise the low rail bridge separating Sherwood and Corinda. There are a number of significant bottlenecks along the Oxley Road corridor. Obviously, at one end it's the Walter Taylor Bridge, which is the elephant in the room, the LMP don't want to talk about. And then the Ipswich Motorway at the other end. So there's six kilometres of constrained arterial road down a peninsula. It has extremely poor vehicle lane arrangements, it has no bike lanes, it has very poor pedestrian crossings. And we have a real bottleneck and safety issue where the low rail bridge is at Corinda. Now these rail bridges were built, you know, a hundred plus years ago and they've been upgraded over that time, but you know, this is part of the original rail line that came out when the junction was at Oxley back in the eighteen hundreds. It is a low rail bridge that has been built for horse and cart and it is not suitable in today's environment for the vehicle traffic that is carried on Oxley Road. About thirty-three thousand vehicles a day use Oxley Road. Under the rail bridge, there's, you wouldn't ride a bike under there. And then the footpath is one of those metre-wide jobs that's terrible, it's steep. It's actually sort of halfway up the embankment, it goes through a really dark underpassy type tunnel on the side. So it's just, it's terrible for everybody. It's an issue that I have been lobbying our state member on, Mark Bailey, the previous member Scott Emerson showed no interest in any of these issues whatsoever. And it is an issue that I've been lobbying Mark Bailey about because if council's not going to do anything about the Walter Taylor Bridge, then the solution in my mind is that we have to make existing Oxley Road more functional for residents who live in this corridor, who go to school in this corridor and who work in this corridor. Oxley Road carries a huge amount of traffic from the outer southwestern suburbs because it has a bridge connection to Indrapilly, the University of Queensland and then into the city. The low rail bridge is this choke point. It is extremely narrow, single lane each way. I think just over a thousand residents signed the petition. It was a really significant piece of feedback from the community that I represent. I am concerned that both the state government and council are going to play politics with this and it is such an important issue, I do not want to see it lost with the state saying, oh, council's not doing this and council staying to the state, oh, you're not doing this. And there's a little bit of that going on here. So look, about eight months ago, the state member announced it in his local newsletter that he was going to do it and I say good on him for indicating that he is prepared in principle to pay for the substantive upgrade of this bridge. He's not asking council for money for the bridge works, is my understanding in discussions with him. Council would be responsible for the road, pedestrian and cycling infrastructure that would go under the new bridge alignment. Presumably that will be a chunky project of some several million dollars, but that is something that council would have to work through in a future budget. The response before us today is, it's a weak one. And I have agreed to it because there's nothing wrong with it, it's, for those listening and those who might read this later, I'm not asked what I think the response should be, council sends me a response and I'm only allowed to say yes or no, that's it. So the response is that we write to the state government. And I'd like to read that letter out, so people understand how, how the political games of this state are being played. So this is the letter. And it went to the Department of Main Roads from one of our senior council officers.
Councillors, will be heard in silence, please.
I write in relation to three petitions Brisbane City Council has received requesting council works with the Queensland State Government to widen the Oxley Road rail bridge. The petitions contain nine hundred and fifty-three signatures and are referring to an offer the Queensland government has made to provide funding to widen the rail bridge. As you know, the rail bridge is a Queensland government asset and council is unable to carry out works on it. Council is unaware of any funding commitment which has been made. I'll keep going. I would be grateful if you could respond and provide advice on the status of any planning works the Department of Transport and Main Road is undertaking to widen Oxley Road rail bridge. Now, number one, that's not true because I've seen the correspondence between the Minister for Transport and the state member here and the former lord mayor. So clearly this idea that councillor are unaware or, you know, those kind of comments are unhelpful because there have been discussions between the lord mayor and the minister for transport. Now, this is why I get, I get so annoyed, so annoyed with the major parties and this is one of the days where I'm very pleased I'm an independent because this shouldn't get bogged down in politics. The state is saying they will do their part and pay for the rail bridge works, which are going to be enormously costly. Council should be going to the state with open arms, open arms, saying that is great. Show us your plans, not we're unaware, we don't know. What, you know, what does it say? Please provide advice on the status, you should be saying, yes, that's a great idea, yes, that's a great offer. Tell us how we can work with you, because I want to see these improvements done in my community, so generations, future generations have got safe road, pedestrian and cycling facilities in my ward. And we can get rid of this massively old, century-old bottleneck in our community. And I was really interested to hear today, and I will be pursuing this, and I look forward to the lord mayor's response at some point. Councillor Cooper has gone out of her way to proactively undertake an MOU with the state government on a state government project on the north side of the city in an LNP ward on a roadwork issue. So there's no funding commitment from the state government to do anything over there on the road project. Council is driving a particular outcome it wants to achieve on state government, on the edge of state government and council land. It's exactly the same situation here and that is what has prompted my question to the lord mayor earlier today. If the infrastructure chairperson is prepared to proactively drive an MOU with the state government over at Chermside, then I think it is the same thing that we should be doing here and this is something a flag I'll be pursuing in coming weeks. Simply just sort of going back and forth without making any commitment, without indicating your support, puts this project at risk. It is playing politics when they do not need to be played here. We want to see a good outcome, not just for my community. Councillor Griffiths' community, councillor Strunk's community, councillor Owen's community and councillor Burke's community all rely on Oxley Road to get into the city. It is, it would be hugely beneficial and much safer if we pursue this project. And I encourage the lord mayor and the infrastructure minister to do so with all vigour, all energy. Because, you know, if this state government is allowed to, I guess, not do the work, let's say two years passes, there's a change of government, you know, different government gets in, the commitment may be lost. So it is so critical and so crucial that we establish the right mechanism to drive this important project forward. And I can see the lord mayor is sitting here and I hope he is listening because I know he knows I've raised it with him before. I do not want to see this get lost. You know, the politics of this should not be allowed to overwhelm the practical outcome that we need to improve one of the most congested arterial roads in Brisbane. And this is a really good way that we can get things started. So I'm hoping there might be some planning money perhaps in the council budget in June, a little bit to get this project started from our point of view. Perhaps a few hundred thousand dollars to look at scoping the roadworks and the road project, to look at getting things underway and to set up maybe some sort of steering group or working committee to work with the state government. That would be, I think, a good outcome. Obviously, you know, major projects take a little bit of time to develop and I'm not expecting there'll be suddenly fifty million dollars in the budget. But I would be hoping that we will see a substantive commitment to the planning and the negotiation with the state government that we need to ensure that this low rail bridge bottleneck is dealt with. I just want to put on the record again that in all of my lobbying for this, that it's always been about widening, not raising.
Are there any further speakers? They're being done, councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, in response to that comment in relation to the petition at item C, I understand that councillor Johnson suggested that she has cited correspondence back and forward between Minister Bailey and the lord mayor, the then lord mayor Graham Quirk. If she has read that, then I would be happy to follow through the logic of her argument, she's saying that in committee today, we talked about the Prince Charles Hospital and how we are pursuing an MOU to ensure that there is an agreement as to how we would proceed on a project. That's been something we've discussed in this chamber before, that we are no longer prepared to accept on face value when the state government says we'd like to do a project with you, that we have a clear undertaking from them as to how they would seek to fund or support council in undertaking that project. That I can remember quite clearly councillor Sutton saying to me, and it was, I think, it was very interesting that she reflected that we should not trust any of these sorts of verbal arrangements, we should ensure that there is essentially a contractually binding arrangement between both parties, that being the state government and local government, and I appreciate her comments and I have very much taken those to heart. So just to be clear, we've had minister, Mr Mark Bailey in September of two thousand and seventeen seeking to lobby council to cooperate and undertake a joint project with the state government responsible for the bridge work and Brisbane City Council responsible for roadworks on Oxley Road underneath and leading to the rail bridge. So that was a letter to the lord mayor of that time. The lord mayor then went back and said that the rail bridge is a constraint, agreed that it was a constraint on traffic flows. As a bridge is owned by the Queensland government, it is outside of council's jurisdiction and that's why we seek a formal commitment from the Queensland government to undertake further investigations to identify the planning and design requirements to upgrade both the rail and road network at this location. So the lord mayor at the time, councillor Quirk, went back and said, we seek a formal commitment from you. Then there was, and there was no follow-up from that. Then there was Mark Bailey writing to the lord mayor on the fourth of June, two thousand and eighteen, talking about the need, a need for cooperative relationship in relation to this particular project. Then again, there was a response to that on the twenty-ninth of June, two thousand and eighteen. And I again say, I'll read the last paragraph of that letter, again pointing out that the rail bridge is a state government asset and noting it is a constraint on traffic flows in the corridor. And I'll quote directly, as you are aware, the bridge is owned by the Queensland government and is outside of council's jurisdiction. That is why council has previously requested a formal funding commitment from the Queensland government in the form of an MOU, memorandum of understanding, to undertake further investigations. Such work would identify the planning and design requirements to upgrade both the rail and road network. and road network at this location. So thank you very much, councillor. But in fact, if you do have a copy of this information, that is exactly, exactly what we've been asking for and we will continue to pursue this because I do agree with one of your comments, that yes, there are possibilities for improvement of functionality of Oxley Road and this is definitely a constraint. And we're happy to work in partnership with the state government. But we require a response. We require them to sign an MOU, to actually have a formal commitment, a legally binding commitment that they will actually do as they say. And we have yet to see any response. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Cooper. I'll now put to resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Can I please draw the attention of the council to the report of the City Planning Committee? Councillor Burke?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 14th of May 2019, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr. Chair. It's been moved by Councillor Burke, seconded by Councillor Toomey, the report of the City Planning Committee dated Tuesday, the 14th of May 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Burke?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. Just before I get to the committee report that we had before us, just a couple of items. I advised committee this morning that the development assessment summary report that's emailed to ward officers on a daily basis of changes in application statuses, new applications and so on and such forth, hadn't gone out today or yesterday due to a glitch in the automation system. Councillors will have received that for today, this afternoon. We have found a workaround and we are able to get that information to councillors, so that's gone to your ward office email addresses and I believe it is the compiled email for the last two days. Turning to some good news, Mr. Chair. Plan Your Brisbane, that fantastic engagement exercise that this administration undertook with the residents of Brisbane, has again received due recognition, Mr. Chair. Due recognition. And the Labor Party can bleed all they want about it, Mr. Chair, because we know that they don't like engaging with the people and seeking the views and feedback of the residents of Brisbane. They refer to it as just a game. Thank you, Lord Mayor. They refer to it as just a game. Well, it isn't just a game. It was an exercise in engagement, in listening and understanding the views and the desires of the residents of Brisbane on how they would like to see our city grow into the future. And so it's my pleasure to present, I'll present it to the Lord Mayor, he's right here. The award from the Property Council for Innovation and Excellence for Plan Your Brisbane. This isn't the state award, Mr. Chair. This is the national award from the Property Council. So having won the state award, we are now winning the national award for Innovation and Excellence for Plan Your Brisbane. This goes with the other national, the other state awards. This goes with the other state awards that Plan Your Brisbane has won and now is the first national award, as well as the international commendation that we got just last week as well. So Plan Your Brisbane, there you go, Lord Mayor, congratulations. Plan Your Brisbane is now a multi-award winning exercise in engagement, in discussing planning issues with the residents of a city. As I say, it is a multi-award winning engagement process in, and how we engage with residents, how we listen to their views and then how we respond to help protect the lifestyle that Brisbane is so well renowned for. As I said, it beat in the national category a range of other projects across the city, including Development Eye, which was the Sunshine Coast's new PD online version that they put forward, which is a really innovative project, but it's great that Property Council has seen fit to acknowledge the fantastic work that's been done as part of Plan Your Brisbane. And I want to take this opportunity to particularly thank the chief planner in Brisbane City Council, but also all of the council officers who have worked on this project. It is an ongoing project. So while Plan Your Brisbane itself and Brisbane's Future Blueprint have been rolling out over the last eighteen months to two years, it is an ongoing project and I want to thank them and commend them for all the fantastic work that they have done. Just turning very quickly to the committee report, Mr. Chair. It was a committee report on Botanica. So Botanica ran this year, Mr. Chair, without the Commonwealth Games. Of course, last year when Botanica was on, it was put on as part of the Commonwealth Games festival events that sat around that fantastic event that was here in the state of Queensland. It opened for its ten days on the 10th of May, ran through to the 19th of May, Mr. Chair, down in the city Botanic Gardens. It was a fantastic opportunity with the majority of the artworks and presentations being provided by local artists. It was a fantastic opportunity to engage with local residents, to engage with universities, but also those local artists to display their artworks in a fantastic outdoor gallery. You do not get many opportunities when you're an artist to use a space like the city Botanic Gardens and it was a fantastic opportunity for those particular artists that were selected. In particular, I want to just acknowledge waste piles by five mile radius. And this was an installation that was installed into one of the grass lawns. It was pieces of waste, be it construction waste or commercial waste or residential waste that was collected within a distance of the city Botanic Gardens and then formulated into artwork and seating installations as part of Botanica. We also had circle work, which was a creative use of the lawn spaces in the city Botanic Gardens where sections weren't mown for a period of time to actually give some depth and effect to the various lawn areas and also to help interpret and let people take their shoes off and walk through longer grass, which is something that people don't often get the chance to do, Mr. Chair. So it really was a fantastic exhibition. We, the crowd numbers are still being finalised, but we expect that there will be as many people this year as there was last year, given the first few days. That first weekend was superb in terms of the attendance and I know that there is going to be another presentation about this when we get to budget. I look forward to continuing this fantastic project that is Botanica into the future as part of what this council does to create more to see and do for the residents of Brisbane.
Further debate? They're being done, I'll put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Can I draw the attention of the council to the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report? Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, held on Tuesday, the 14th of May 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Hammond, seconded by Councillor Richards, the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, dated on Tuesday, dated Tuesday, the 14th of May 2019, be adopted. Any debate? Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the committee on the 14th of May, we had a presentation from council officers on the Brisbane Garden Plant Expo. Firstly, I would like to thank all the residents who attended. The numbers were massive despite the very, very wet weekend on the 16th and 17th of March at the beautiful Doomben Racecourse Ascot for the second year in a row. We also had six petitions come through council, petition requesting council fund the installation of a mountain bike facility at, at a park at Mount Crosby, a petition requesting council remove trees planted in Nita Street Park, Corinda, two petitions requesting the construction of a car park in Parkland in Anala, and a petition requesting additional car parking at Ferney Grove Aqua Park. And finally, a petition requesting the removal of a gazebo located in the Avenue Park in Sunnybank Hills. I look forward to the debate. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listen, I want to, I rise to speak on the, on the two petitions before us, item D, and if I could ask for that to be taken seriatum for voting purposes?
You're asking for item D to be taken seriatum for voting?
Correct. Yes, thank you. Listen, I rise to speak on this petition or petitions that requested, the Bluefin Fishing Club requested that, that a parcel of land directly to the, directly behind the fishing club be considered to be used for a car park under a leasing arrangement with Brisbane City Council through, which is held in trust from the state government. I had the, a delegation come and see me some months ago in regards to an issue that they were having at the club and their issue is that their, their, their growth is, is, has been remarkable over the last number of years, which I'm sure a lot of clubs would just, would greatly, would greatly want to have. The Bluefin Fishing Club is the largest sport and recreation fishing club in Queensland.
Councillors, will we hear in silence, please? Councillor Strunk?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's the largest sport and recreational fishing club in Queensland. It has many, many thousands of members and, and, and of course, there's, there's a lot of people that actually aren't necessarily members of the club like a leagues club or some other clubs that use the facility for, for, you know, I suppose, coming out and having a good night out. But there are quite, quite a lot of sportsmen or fishermen that actually undertake all sorts of type fishing, even deep sea fishing. And on a, on an annual basis, they have a, they have a competition that goes and then there's a big annual, annual event at the end of, end of the year, trophy, a trophy evening, which again, the place is packed. So, so when they came and saw me and said, listen, we have problems with parking because we, we want to be a good neighbour and, and a lot of our patrons are having to park out on the road, both sides. And we, we think that this is not, this is not really safe for their patients, their patrons and also passing traffic. So they thought this may be a, a way of overcoming that. They did give me the background in regards to other ways to, to increase the parking, the parking space within or close to the club, which didn't pan out. They had offered to buy a number of properties from, from business owners and things like that to try to convert those properties into parking. But that didn't, that didn't pan out. So this was their last resort really, to ask the Brisbane City Council to consider that the, that a portion of, of a park that, which is directly behind them, be, be considered to be used for car parking. They were prepared to, to, to actually construct the car park, do, do some drainage. There was going to be major drains that had to be overcome as well, that they would actually maintain the space as well, you know, for, for, for whatever lease period that the, the council awarded them. And, and even, even considered, not considered, they even offered to cut the grass in the rest of the park and maintain that park, the rest of the park as well. So they were, they were very, they were very generous in, in what they were offering council. Now, to council's credit, they, they asked to, for me to actually facilitate a meeting with the, with the Lord Mayor, former Lord Mayor Graham Quirk. That took place in his, in his office and it was scheduled to go for around about fifteen, twenty minutes and it went for forty-five. So they got a really fair hearing. I think the Lord Mayor was impressed with the presentation, but, but sadly, they, they didn't get the response that they wanted. However, a, another option was available to them, that they would be able to use the space temporarily and then, and while they were maybe constructing a, maybe another tier or putting a tier on the existing car park area to give them additional car parking. Anyways, they, they were, they thought about that and then council made contact, council officers made contact with them and they were offered or said that there may be another pathway, not, not using the park, but some council, some council land that was not part of the park, along with maybe some land that a, that one of the churches uses or one of, behind one of the churches, which is pretty much disused as well. So that they would help maybe negotiate or come into, into some sort of arrangement. I don't know what the outcome of that is, I haven't been told, because it's, it's important that, that this, this club, the, the only club within the Anala suburb, right? And a very large club which has been going for sixty years now, be allowed to continue to grow, to, to support the needs of a, of a growing community, especially those areas that are continuing to grow in the Richlands, in the Richlands area as well. So I, I said to them, I would make a commitment that I would support the petition, which I'm continuing to, to undertake so that we won't be supporting the recommendation for the petition. I do appreciate all the work the council has done to try to help facilitate a, an outcome. But I, we won't be supporting the petition, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise to speak on item C and ask that it be taken seriatum separately from item D for voting purposes, please.
Okay, I'm just going to repeat that to you, that you'd like item C separate and by itself. That's C, Nita Park, Corinda, yeah?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I rise to speak on this issue about the trees in Nita Street Park in Corinda. This is a really unfortunate situation in my view and it really should never, ever have happened. Council decided that it was going, well, it advised me it was going to plant some two hundred trees across twenty-three parks, I think it was in my ward. I got a one-line email from council. I thought, all right, well, that sounds like about ten trees in each park. And perhaps I should have written back to the arborist saying, list all the trees, list all the parks, list all the species. But it was such an innocuous email. And normally they come out and brief me, I get a map, they show me where the trees are going to go. And that process, the standard process that has been happening for ten years wasn't followed last year and I got this pretty much one-line email. So it seemed to me it was a fairly minor exercise of putting a few trees in here and there. Unfortunately, in two adjoining parks, so there's Nita Street Park, which immediately adjoins Archer Street Park and it's on the banks of Oxley Creek, in the back end of Corinda, just across from the, just across from the Oxley Creek Common. So there's about sixty trees that were planted in Nita Street Park and another sixty trees that were planted in Archer Street Park. So in an area that had beautiful open space from the residents' point of view, council just jammed in a hundred and twenty trees without telling anybody into that one single space. And council considers it two parks, but it does not look like two parks and you ask the residents and they wouldn't think it's two parks either. So immediately when this started happening, the residents contacted me. Most of these trees, or a lot of these trees, I'm sorry, not most of them, a lot of these trees were planted immediately on people's back fences. So it's going to have impact, impacts on, as these trees get bigger, their roots are going to start encroaching. And there's a couple of really big trees that have been planted adjacent to the house at the end of Clivedon Avenue, which backs onto this park as well. So the negotiations with council did get a few trees removed and we asked for them just to be relocated in other parks where, you know, I gave some suggestions and the council officers had some and we moved those, I think it was about fourteen trees. We moved those fourteen trees, you know, pretty easily. And really, I think a few more should have been done at that time. The residents weren't happy that that went far enough. Council then refused to consider any more of my requests and the residents' requests. So we did a petition and all of the residents who back onto this park signed that, asking for more of the trees to be removed. Now, I certainly, and I was upfront with the residents, I don't support all of the trees being removed. Certainly, you know, planting trees is a great thing for our environment. However, you want to plant trees where they will be loved, supported, nurtured by local residents, where they add value to the local environment. I mean, this park, the reason it's so open is the Pony Club is right next door. It floods, there's significant flooding through here and that's two or three times a year, it's a major overland flow issues. And the residents rightly have pointed out, the residents rightly have pointed out that the reason half the trees got washed away last time was because of the flooding and that's caused the most damage. So they plant these trees, the floods come through, it knocks the trees down and then we go back. So this is a recurring cycle. It's just that this time it was extremely extensive. So look, I, I feel, I feel very disappointed that we've been unable to negotiate a better outcome here. It's, it's, you know, we've got a different arborist in South Region now and that's been a breath of fresh air, I can tell you. She's engaging, she talks to people, I don't want to put the mozz on the poor woman, but she, she's willing to talk, you know, she's done certain things I'm not happy with because, you know, she's an arborist and a tree expert, but she's always been willing to engage and she's negotiated some very good... she's negotiated some very good solutions for us. And I, I honestly wish she was here last year when we were doing this and we might have got a more practical outcome than previously. So all I can say to the residents is I, I don't support what council is saying here. I believe we could have found or negotiated a more practical outcome that retained some of the trees, but removed those particularly next to the home in Clivedon Avenue. They're very large, I believe they're silky oak trees, they're going to get huge and I don't want to see their fence, their slab, their property impacted by large trees close to their boundary. So to the residents, I'm sorry to say that council is not listening to you on this occasion. I do not support the decision that is before us today. I certainly wanted to work further with council to remove more of these trees and to find a more workable outcome that helped our environment and also respected the residents' views in this area. And I'm, I'm disappointed, I mean, I gave my comments to council, this petition came in in October last year as this was happening, right, as it was happening when we could have made changes. Took council three months to get the petition response to me. I replied to that on the 21st of January and it's now the end of May. It's taken four months since I gave my comments to council for them to even bring the petition forward. You know, that's a reflection on the former chairman, who, you know, wasn't real keen on dealing with me at all, but for the poor residents of this area, you know, four months of nothing happening is just not right. So I just say this, this whole process has not been handled well. These are real people with families, with lives, who have to deal with significant local flooding issues regularly and I'm, I'm disappointed on their behalf that we've been unable to negotiate, you know, a, a more conciliatory outcome that can achieve both our purposes on this occasion and I will not be supporting the recommendation before us today.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor, oh councillor Timmy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item E, the petition surrounding the Fernie Grove Aqua Park. Mr. Chair, this administration is about creating more things to see and do and I have to honestly admit that the Fernie Grove Aqua Park is definitely one of those places with more things to do. Things like water play, adventure play, open space, there's picnic shelters, barbecues, it's a fantastic new space for the city. And I know that many of the residents from the gap and also the adjoining Inogre Ward Chair, as well as Morton Shire, are also enjoying that space. Subsequently, when the park opened in December last year, the city was hit with a record number of days over thirty-two. No time in the city's history have we ever seen so many days where the, where the temperature actually got above thirty-two degrees. And the water park at Fernie Grove actually provided a place for families from Fernie Grove and further afield as far as Aljester, some residents were coming that I'd met there to escape the heat. I know that on the opening day, there were around five hundred families that came along to escape the heat and what a better way to do it than with the, with the bucket dump, the sprayers and also the, the water cannons that are out there. I know you and I, Chair, had fun when we, when we joined the Fernie Grove State School when they opened that park, it was, it was a great day. It's very clear the high levels of patronage were in response to the summer heat and my preference for the space had always been around providing a balance between play and car parking. The project itself actually delivered a hundred and ten percent increase on available spaces. However, given the petition that's before us today, I have been monitoring the available parking spaces across the honeymoon period for the, for the playground and I've actually brought in some photos, so I might submit them if I may as evidence.
Billy, could you take those images from councillor Timmy when he's ready, please? When you're ready.
Thank you. And I did note that as the temperatures dropped, the available car parking spaces actually increased, which is what one would expect. There is an opportunity in the space, Chair, to increase some available parking. There are a number of constraints on the site and many of the residents that I've spoken to about this issue are aware of those constraints. I do support the recommendation of the petition and as well, I'll be supporting any addition for additional parking spaces within the budget, but I've also engaged with council officers to look to see what we can do to provide some short-term parking relief via the Footpath and Parks Trust Fund. And I have to honestly admit, I look forward to continually providing these fantastic play spaces for residents in Fernie Grove and Capera that do provide residents of Brisbane with more to see and do. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Richards.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the petition regarding the bike, a mountain bike facility at Jack Kerr Court Park or Platypus Park at Mount Crosby. Look, Chair, there is a substantial amount of children that live out in that, that area. You're looking at probably around the four thousand as the residents in those suburbs of Crana Downs and that Mount Crosby close-knit community. And yes, there is a high need for some sort of mountain biking facility for the area out there, albeit we do have colo and a lot of reserves that connects through into Lake Manchester, which do have open areas to ride, but this is more about a beginning area for kids to actually learn the skills and mountain biking facilities, which has been fortunate that we've actually had the council's Brisbane Off-Road Cycling Plan project that was a citywide initiative to provide off-road cycling facilities for children, adults and families within our bushland reserves and park, parks which will include mountain bike riding skills, tracks and jumps. The good thing about that is an online survey conducted from the 12th of March 2019 to the 10th of April, and we've received a lot of feedback during that time as well. The benefit of that is that we will include the Jack Kerr Court Park and Platypus Park, Mount Crosby, as part of the draft Brisbane Off-Road Cycling Concept Plans. And I know the head petition is very excited to hear that he's been included as part of that communication and feedback loop on that particular item. Now, the other item I just wanted to talk about specifically more along the lines from the bushland aspect is the petition about Nieda Street Park, which is item C. Look, you know, Chair, I do live in a, in a ward that is significantly magnificent for the aspects of bushland and I do know this particular area quite well, having lived over in that area of town for many years before moving out to Pullen Vale. And I appreciate there's some concerns from the local councillor and I acknowledge that, but what I want to put on record, which is, you know, from my perspective about the bushland there is, those homes do look out on to bushland and yes, there are some open spaces, but more specifically, there's trees that were already there and the ones that were planted were up to eight metres from boundaries and the ones that were asked to be removed were ones that were actually behind the properties. So in terms of trying to create that open space facilities, the plants, the trees that were actually planted through the middle area weren't asked to be removed. It was ones that were at the back of the boundaries of properties, which when you look at this and you look at the landscape that's already there, you know, the assumption anyone would make is that it's about trying to maintain their views or possibly their property values because of the trees impacting their view would impact their value later on. So I just want to put on record that, you know, this council is about appreciating the green space, creating further opportunities for more offset tree planting for the areas and certainly not impacting or restricting communities with the use of that green space. Now, there is a waterway corridor through that area as well, so these trees were placed in an area through the middle of the space through where the water does flow, so it certainly would help and prevent a lot more damage that would have occurred prior when flooding did happen. So I just wanted to put that on record that, you know, we are supporting the green space and the communities with offset tree planting. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly to sum up on some of the items that councillor Strunk said on item B, there was actually three petitions put in, we did have to pull on ones coming back through next week and councillor Strunk is aware of that. The third, two petitions were for the car park that was in this petition to put in the council parkland. We've got to acknowledge there is a car park for, yes, it is a very large club, very successful large fishing club, there is a car park next to their clubhouse and there's also another club, car park close by, so with lots and plenty of street parking. The third petition, which will be coming through council next week, I just want to put that to the record, was a petition against turning a council park into a car park. This is our preferred option and also the local residents surrounding the area didn't want their local park to be put into a car park. So on saying that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks councillor Hammond. All right, I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye. To the, oh, excuse me, everybody. There'll be, this is for A, B, E and F, all those in favour say aye. And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Item C, all those in favour say aye. And to the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. There's a division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Strunk. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, please ring the bells. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr. Chairman, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-four in favour and one against.
The ayes have it, please return to your chairs. All those in favour of item D say aye. And to the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cook and councillor Strunk, eyes to my right, nose to my left, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chairman, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour and five against.
The ayes have it, please return to your chairs. Can I draw the council's attention to the Field Services Committee report? Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
Excuse me, it's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, the report of the Field Services Committee dated Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted. All those in fa, sorry, further debate?
Thank you, Chair. Last week, our committee meeting had a presentation from our manager of Fleet Solutions on the Yellow Ribbon National Road Safety Week. The committee was given an informative presentation on this annual initiative from the Safer Australian Roads and Highways, also known as SERA Group, acknowledging the lives lost on Australian roads. The SERA Group was established by Peter Fraser in memory of his daughter Sarah, who was killed alongside a tow truck driver in the emergency breakdown lane on the Hume Highway in February 2012. This year, National Road Safety Week was held between the 6th and 12th of May and throughout the week landmarks across the city were lit up yellow to support the road safety initiative. In Brisbane, iconic attractions such as the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Wickham Terrace Car Park were illuminated yellow to share the road safety message. To demonstrate council's support for National Road Safety Week, Fleet Solutions arranged for yellow ribbon stickers to be displayed at the rear of council vehicles and one was sent to each councillor and I would strongly encourage you all to place it on your vehicle and drive so others survive. Chair, I commend the report to the chamber.
Further debate? There being none, I'll put the report, those in favour say aye. The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Can I, councillors, the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, councillor Matic.
Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
Been moved by councillor Matic, seconded by councillor Richards, the report of the Lifestyle Arts and Community Services Committee dating, dated Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Matic.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, it was a presentation on the BrizAsia Festival and just credit to the officers again and to supporters of this important programme. It highlights the, the great diversity of our city and the reasons that our city's history and culture is so rich. And it's programmes like this, this administration, this council, that we importantly need to support, not only now but into the future, but also to look for those opportunities to further enhance and promote our multicultural and diversely rich community and why it makes Brisbane such a great place to live. Thank you.
Further debate? There being none, I'll put the report, that all those in favour say aye. And to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, the Finance and Economic, Finance and Administration Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor McLaughlin, the report of the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 14th of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just before turning to the committee report in response to a question that councillor Cumming raised a little bit earlier, I can advise that CBIC dividends went into general revenue and this has allowed us to keep rates down by two percent and contribute to the delivery of $1 billion of infrastructure projects. Turning very, very quickly to the committee presentation, I covered it in question time, so just to recap, the program targets refugees who have an overseas qualification, they do a placement with council for up to three months, they receive one-on-one career development and they get access or exposure to a wide range of the branches within the council and a number of these particular people have been shortlisted for internal positions and another have secured external interviews. I'll now leave the debate to the chamber.
Do you have further debate? Councillor Shree.
Thanks. Just really quickly on that, have, have any of them actually gotten jobs with council at this stage or it's still not, yeah, just be interested in the chair's feedback on that question?
That'll just be in a later, the chair may choose to respond in a later speech. Further speeches, further contributions? Councillor Allen.
Councillor Shree, I'm happy to take that on notice and come back to you.
All right, I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We'll continue the petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Chair, I submit a petition requesting council expand its free public wifi network to train stations in the Brisbane and Merpetropoleton area.
Councillor Marks.
Yes, I have a petition for residents to upgrade a skate ball.
Councillor Shree.
Mr. Chair, I have a petition requesting that the speed limit be lowered along Montague Road West End.
Is that, are there any others? May I please have a motion to accept those petitions, please?
That the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor, excuse me, it's been moved by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Shree, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any matters of general business? All right now, councillors, this is a maiden speech. Last week, I asked for courtesy for maiden speeches, I expect courtesy again. Councillor Cunningham, please, welcome to the council.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to acknowledge the traditional owners and custodians of the land. Thank you Chair, I would like to acknowledge the traditional owners and custodians of the land on which our council meets, the Turrbal and Yuggera people, their elders past and present. Indulge me if you will, as I pause for just one moment for this special time, as I look around. The awe and wonder of this historical Brisbane City Council chamber, where those who have come before us have all contributed to shape and influence my home city from behind these same benches for the past eighty-nine years. For more than a decade, my community, my neighbourhood, has been served by my friend Ian Mackenzie. Ian has been a loyal councillor, a kind gentleman. I could not mention Ian without also recognising the outstanding contribution from his wife, Josie Mackenzie. Josie is the force behind Ian and her dedication to our community continues through her work as an ambassador for the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust. I am humbled to have been given this opportunity. It is an absolute privilege to help, to listen and to serve my community. Over fifteen years ago, my career started as a journalist. Community concerns were at the centre of my work then, as they are today. I am a community advocate by trade. Like many other young families, I love my area. The balance between old and new, public transport and accessibility, bikeways and busways, the diversity and choices add to the appeal. Cooperu and its surrounding suburbs, like Greenslopes, Anna Lee, Stone's Corner, Camp Hill and Carina Heights have a rich history, a proud heritage, one that is reflected in the many character homes and public buildings that form our unique streetscape. My community has been home to war heroes and widows, entrepreneurs and entertainers, risk takers, rule breakers, philanthropists and politicians. Back then, as it is today, the newer generations live in restored or modern homes and walk our historic streets. Some we praise, others we pursue, there are those heartened by our support and those who we must help. Over the years, community facilities like the Langlands Park Pool, the fields at Easts, White's Hill and Greenslopes have been the training ground for sports stars and Olympic medalists. But on any given morning, from the crack of dawn, the young, the old, the would-be's, the could-be's, share the same green space and community facilities. I believe it is our job as councillors to serve the whole community, ensuring our living standards continue to exceed the pace of a modern city. While the Cooperu Ward has a rich history, it is also a place of opportunity and optimism for thousands of new Australians who now call it home. Around one in four residents of my ward were born overseas. These people have brought with them their experiences and traditions and by sharing them have contributed to a more inclusive, harmonious and better Brisbane. People like Saranja Prasad, who through the multicultural hub at Arnwood Place at Anna Lee, recently brought together local people from many different faiths in my ward to commemorate those who died in the Sri Lankan attack. People who formed the Rotary Club of Stone's Corner and I acknowledge our president Bruce Wallace and my sponsor Frank Whitman. This is a club which has served my community for more than fifty-nine years, taking on projects big and small, their breadth of their kindness and generosity to our community knows no bounds. While I have paid tribute to Ian Mackenzie, I would also like to acknowledge another former councillor, Richard Jeffries OAM. The list of Rick's accomplishments in this place and in my community is ongoing and extensive. He served as alderman in the ward of Camp Hill from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-one. Rick remains an honorary ambassador for the city of Brisbane. A man of foresight, Rick's contribution to the local environment and heritage must form part of his proudest achievements. From introducing the first trial of recycling bins, or bags as they were then, to greening our city with park and street tree plantings. He also played an instrumental role with White's Hill Reserve at Camp Hill, the green lungs of my ward where so many children and their parents enjoy hours of outdoor playtime. He formed the Camp Hill Ward Heritage Committee, which went on to become the Cooperu and District's Heritage Group, still active today under the leadership and through commitment from another local achiever, Ron Baker. Rick has been a source of guidance and support to me and I thank him for his generosity and friendship. Another former great who represented my community is the late Catherine Birmingham. The Bowies Flat Wetlands at Cooperu is one of her legacies. While former councillor Birmingham and I come from different corners of the ring, I had the honour of working alongside her for a short period. I always found her to have a warm and generous heart. I remember her fondly with respect and admiration. I am in this chamber today following in the footsteps of these individuals who have succeeded. But I didn't come here just to succeed, I came to give back. In these modern times where it's easy to be cynical and ever fearful, let us not forget that together we can make change happen. As I look to the future, our Lord Mayor has a vision to make sure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. His focus as Lord Mayor is to build the critical infrastructure our city needs, like public transport and road networks, to ensure we can all get home easier and safer to our families. I am proud to be part of a team of people who want to achieve this, while at the same time working to protect our unique lifestyle and expand our city's green space. Residents can expect me as their councillor to work hard, just as they do, to make a better life for their families. Together with the Lord Mayor, we are building a better Brisbane and protecting our unique lifestyle. Building the infrastructure like roads and bridges needed to ease traffic congestion while ensuring we preserve the green space and embarking on the biggest investment in parks our city has ever seen. Luckily, I will be held accountable by the dozens of environment groups that spend their time cleaning up our creeks and waterways, removing weeds and restoring natural habitat and I look forward to getting my hands dirty alongside them. I'm also excited about the Hanlon Street Park upgrade, a green space that my family and I know so well. The upgraded Langlands Park Pool, where my family and I go to swimming lessons. Fixing the Samuel Street intersection at Camp Hill, where we as a family go shopping. Fighting for an upgrade to the Stone's Corner Library and improvements to local public transport, including the much anticipated and fully funded Brisbane Metro. Brisbane is a city of precincts and we see that in Cooperu Ward, where local residents enjoy entertainment and dining hubs, like at Martha Street at Camp Hill, Cooperu Square and Logan Road, Stone's Corner. I am determined to work to foster an environment where business and our local economy flourishes. Residents of my ward work hard for their own money by their own hand. They are proud to invest in a future for their family where they can live safely and securely in the knowledge their efforts will be rewarded, that their council will not take away but only add value to their lifestyle. As their local councillor, I am here to support those efforts, to celebrate alongside them and to add to their quality of life each and every day. Chair, my neighbourhood is very special to me, it is an honour to represent my community here in this place. Thank you.
Further general business, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I just wanted to rise briefly to, just to say a few words about three important events that have happened in Tennyson Ward so far this year. Earlier this year, the Graceful Bowls Club turned one hundred, actually there's four. One hundred is pretty impressive, but can I say this in the environment, that this year the Sherwood State School turned one hundred and fifty-three. So we are blessed in Tennyson Ward with a wonderful range of community groups that have historically helped shape and define our district. But there've been some very significant events this year I just wanted to mention on the record. Firstly, the Graceful Bowls Club turned one hundred. They published a book, which I helped fund through the Lord Mayor Suburban Initiative Fund. We had a wonderful event, which their patron, the governor of Queensland, Paul De Jersey, attended and the club made a ceremonial bowl and he rolled the ceremonial bowl and he played it end with the club members and the Queensland champion and the club members won, which was fantastic. It was a wonderful day, a huge amount of work went on and at a time when other bowls clubs around our community are struggling, the Graceful Bowls Club has really reinvented itself over recent years. Most of the drama actually was before I became the councillor. They did sell one of their greens, which was highly controversial at the time. But the good news is that they still have two greens, they are sustainable, they've reached out their hand to the community, they hold a huge number of other groups, host them in the, in the club. So they've become quite sustainable, they also do barefoot bowls and have drinks on Fridays and they bowl. So, you know, they're the kind of example I think that, you know, bowls clubs can be in our community, little community hubs. And I just want to congratulate them on their centenary this year. The Graceful Croquet Club, of which I'm a patron, turned one hundred, councillor Matic attended that event on behalf of the Lord Mayor. You know, they're, they pretty much formed within a couple of months of each other. The men set up the Bowls Club, which was men only at that time and then a few months later, the ladies set up the Croquet Club, which at that time was women only. This is a small group of residents, they were the very first sporting club to be established in Graceful Memorial Park. The rugby and the cricket came second, that got a bit of a cheer and I mentioned that in the speech. They are a gorgeous club, I love going there, I love socialising with them, playing a game of croquet. That fifty-five people can run this club and maintain the lawns and, you know, they undertook a major upgrade with a council grant that really council should have done for them, but they did it. Members ranged from sort of sixty to ninety, you know, they're, they're just an extraordinary group of people. They're a joy to support and I just want to congratulate them on their one hundredth anniversary this year. They put a huge effort into the event and literally it did not rain all day and so they played the, a tournament and then just as we were having the outdoor official ceremony, down it came. So all of the best laid plans moved inside where it was standing room only in the, in the pavilion and it was still a wonderful event. So, you know, I just want to congratulate the, the Graceful Croquet Club. The Sherwood Indrapili RSL also turned one hundred this year. We, as been discussed in this chamber, one of the ways in which our community's chosen to honour the Sherwood Indrapili RSL is by recognising Maurice Little, who was the inaugural president of the Sherwood Indrapili RSL and I've spoken in the chamber about his remarkable war service and his contribution to helping establish the Sherwood, as it was then, RSL back in nineteen nineteen. You know, and that RSL is, is a wonderful place, I think most of us have RSLs in our area and we understand that sub-branches are full of extraordinary men and women who have served our country. So it's a great pleasure for me to support the RSL and to work with them to achieve the projects that we need to do. We're also working this year on upgrading the cenotaph, it's been a battle to get council to do it, but I've given them some money, the state members given them some money, the federal government's given them some money and the RSL's putting in some money and council wouldn't agree to do the work. So we spent a whole year basically trying to get council to agree to the work, we finally do. We've got a new heritage, heritage expert at council who is very proactive and very good. She came to some meetings and suddenly we had a way forward. So I thank the officers and the RSL for, we were hoping to have it done for ANZAC Day, but it won't be done until Remembrance Day, but that will be another important way that we can mark the centenary of the Sherwood Indrapili RSL. And finally, today I had the great pleasure of attending the sixtieth anniversary, so they're babies. They're babies in my community, the sixtieth anniversary of the Corinda Graceful Catholic Women's League. Now this is a wonderful group of ladies, there's twenty-two of them. This year, they raised four thousand two hundred dollars, which they distributed to a range of Catholic and local community charities in my ward. Their numbers have been dwindling a little bit, but the ladies who are still members have wonderful social activities. They raise much-needed funds to support the needy in our community. They are a faith-based organisation, so they look after the spiritual health of their membership but also our parish out in Corinda and Graceful. And I'd just like to congratulate them on their sixtieth jubilee anniversary to, today. And they had a lovely mass, went to mass today and we had a lovely lunch afterwards. So I'd just like to say that I live in the best part of Brisbane. We have by far and away the most extraordinary groups who are, you know, so giving and so incorporated into community life in my district. It's, I feel really lucky that I get to represent such an amazing community and I would just like to pass on my congratulations to the Graceful Bowls Club, the Graceful Croquet Club, the Sherwood Indrapili RSL and the Corinda Graceful Catholic Women's League on their very significant anniversaries this year. And long may they continue.
Further speakers, councillor Windham.
Thank you Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, I rise to speak on eight one eight Rhodey Road. Imagine this. You wake up to the sound of bulldozers clearing four and a half hectares of land in the middle of Brisbane, over the road from one of our better environmental areas. The environmental area being the Raven Street Reserve and Education Centre. These bulldozers will move in with the blessing of the state government. The state government hasn't been listening for over fifteen years. The state government was offered three point seven five million for this land at the same time that the federal government under John Howard sold Brisbane City Council Poo Corner for one dollar. Sadly, the cost of Poo Corner had an added ninety-seven thousand in stamp duty to the state government. So may I say, the Labor state government over the years has only looked at our bushland as a cash cow to fill their coffers. They put in a DA, the Blue Care put in a DA on this site, which we refused because it had environmental values, environmental values that were recognised by local Labor councillors. But still, after our objecting to the DA, the state government called it in and passed it. I received a copy of a letter only recently and it starts with, "I was very disheartened and angry to hear this morning that after Brisbane City Council rejected the development, the state government has approved it." The letter ends with, "A resident, a parent, a small business owner and a citizen of this planet, I demand that you see the value in this area of bushland and retract your approval. Listen to the people that live here." That was a letter from a local resident to the state. That was a letter from a local resident to the state government. So for fifteen years they've been fighting for this bushland, that most of the local community expected would be part of the mountains-to-mangroves corridor, a corridor that passes right through the northern suburb of Brisbane, from the hills to the ocean. So the bulldozers move in, and we get a beautiful four-to-five-storey building, and townhouses, and a childcare unit. But don't fret, they promised to do offset planting. They're going to fill our dog park with the offset planting, or so they think. Pardon the pun, but I don't think any of the dogs will have a leg to stand on. Mr Chairman, last week we discussed changes to the aged care and development issues for the city plan. That sort of policy will stop this ever happening again. It'll also leave our aged care in areas where the people that live in the suburbs can gracefully age in their same suburbs. The clearing the bushland won't do anything for the local residents that have to move to Kibulcha, or somewhere far away, because their families who love that bushland no longer will have it. And sadly, the state government are still not listening, and perhaps, shall I say, after the weekend, that the ALP is not listening. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on two items, the Shawnt Cliff escarpment plan and the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon in Sandgate. Firstly, with the Shawnt Cliff escarpment plan, this is something that I have been lobbying for for the last few years alongside organisations like the Sandgate District Chamber of Commerce, Keep Sandgate Beautiful Association, local businesses and local residents who have been concerned for some time that council's ongoing inaction around maintaining the Shawnt Cliff escarpment has led to safety issues. We've had over the last few years landslips along the Eagle Terrace section of the Shawnt Cliff escarpment, which has seen rocks and debris fall down onto Lover's Walk below. We've seen over a long period in different sections along there, poisoning and vandalism of trees without any successful prosecution by council due to a lack of hard evidence, I suppose. And all we've had for the last couple of years has been a management, not a management plan, but a trimming plan essentially for five key viewpoints. And that was a plan that prescribed the type of tree trimming that should occur at those viewpoints, but it in no way prescribed any remediation works when it comes to erosion along there, or replacing vandalised vegetation. So for the last couple of years, I've been advocating for that and meeting with council officers on-site and in my office. So, to say that the first I've heard about the newsletter going out to the community and the survey was just in question time today is disappointing is an understatement. I received a briefing note earlier this, no, sorry, last month in April, to say that some works will be done, and that at some point in the future there'll be some communication activities. I had to ask for a briefing earlier this month, and I note that I'm getting one in a few days' time, well after that newsletter's gone out. I approached this in a very bipartisan way over the last few years, this has not been a political issue for me, this has been an issue about getting council to implement an escarpment plan that would ensure that that piece of, that unique piece of Brisbane's landscape is protected for future generations. At some points along there, along Shawnt Cliff Parade, there's not much room between the edge of the road and the cliff that is slowly eroding away, so it is almost at crisis point. So I've approached this very actively, and to see the way that this administration is going about communicating this with the community and deliberately cutting me out of that, I think is pretty disappointing, but I'm sure people will see right through that. When it comes to the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon, I want to put on record once again the need for a serious investment in that lagoon. This is something that, again, I've been working with the community, similar groups as well, Sandgate District Chamber of Commerce, Keep Sandgate Beautiful, a wide, wide cross-section of the local community on getting a better outcome for our lagoon. It has been plagued by blue-green algal blooms for many years now. It's been almost twenty years since the last time any major work was done in the lagoon there, there's been some minor repairs to the concrete wall, but that really hasn't contributed anything to the health of that lagoon. I met on-site there, as I said it last month, with Councillor McLaughlin when he was the Parks Chair, and I thought we were approaching that in a great way together, and I made a commitment that again, I would be working in a bipartisan and constructive way with this administration to find a way forward. I've been advised by one of the council officers that News Branch is doing some investigation works around removing the, and again, this isn't, this hasn't been officially communicated with me, this has just been through conversations I've had, removing the concrete wall, making it a more natural edge, removing the silt from that lagoon. I want to say to Councillor Hammond and the administration, that sort of work is of a really, really high priority to the community, so if that work is going on, I fully support that at a planning level, and as I have in my budget request to the Lord Mayor and to the Chair of the Finance Committee, we need to see a pretty serious investment in there. This is an area where council has in the last few years invested in free wifi, done a local business activation plan. It talks about promoting the area for tourism and other visitors to come to, to Sandgate, we're going through a neighbourhood planning process right now, and the reality is, unless we get good rain consistently, what we have is a stinking cesspit in the middle of Sandgate. So what we need to do is get a serious investment in cleaning up that lagoon, and making sure that we invest in what is one of the most unique and best parts of Brisbane. So again, I just call on the administration to please listen to my community and make that serious investment in what is a very, very special part of Brisbane.
Further speakers.
Yeah, thank you Chair, I just want to rise very quickly to mention an article that I was delighted to read in the Local World News Weekly, it's one of the papers that is delivered out to my area all the time, it was published on the twenty-ninth of March two thousand and nineteen. It was a commitment by the then-member for Morton, Mr Graham Perrott, him and the Shadow Minister Tony Burke. I was delighted to see them out in my area at Sunnybank and making a commitment to upgrade the Sunnybank Pedestrian Bridge. The idea apparently is to install lifts at either end of this bridge, they're going to install some security cameras, which I know all the community will be very happy about, given the huge increase in crime out my way, as people who may be aware followed with the crime forum and march that we had not that long ago. This pedestrian bridge goes from Sunnybank Plaza across to Sunnybank Shopping Centres, it's actually owned by Brisbane City Council, so I'm delighted that the federal member and the Shadow Minister are committing to spend one million dollars on that, upgrading that bridge in Sunnybank, so I look forward to meeting with him and working with him on that project. Thank you very much.
Further speakers. There being none, this meeting now concludes.